I'd like to call this meeting of the Norco City Council to order. The clerk will take the role, please.
Councilmember Newton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember Bash?
I am present.
Mayor Protem Hanna?
Yes.
Mayor Grundmeyer?
Yes.
All present?
All right, the City Council will recess to close session to consider the matters listed on the agenda.
Ladies and gentlemen, I call this regular meeting of the Norco City Council to order. At this time, our city attorney will report on actions taken in closed session.
The City Council considered the matters listed on the agenda, and there are no reportable actions.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilman Bash.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll please remain standing for the invocation with Pastor Michelle.
I have to tell you, the "In God We Trust" sign never ceases to amaze me. I am so blessed, I am teary looking at it. And thank you, thank you, thank you for standing up for what is good and right in a world that doesn't always do that. In Daniel, it says, "Let the name of God be blessed forever and ever, for wisdom and power belong to him. It is he who changes the times and the epochs. He removes kings and establishes kings. He gives wisdom to wise men and knowledge to men of understanding. It is he who reveals the profound and hidden things. He knows what is in the darkness, and the light dwells with him." Madam Mayor, councilmen, you have been called for such a time as this. God bless you. Would you pray with me? Lord, thank you. Thank you for this evening. Thank you for the rain that you have been blessing our dry and thirsty state with. Lord, I thank you for this City Council, for these men and women who dare to stand for what is good and true and right. Thank you for Mayor Grundmeyer, for Councilmen Hanna, Newton, Hoffman, and Bash. I thank you, Lord, for their wisdom and their integrity. I thank you for their passion and their dedication to this community. Thank you, Lord, that we still live in a world that is free because of the sacrifices of so many. We invoke, we invite you to be a part of this meeting, to give wisdom, understanding, and compassion. May the words spoken here and decisions made tonight bring you glory and make you look good. May God bless the United States of America, and, Lord, please, continue to bless Horstown, USA, in your precious name. Amen.
All right, at this time, I would like to call up our EDAC Chair, Mr. DeRosa, to present our business appreciation honoree.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And as the mayor comes down to the podium here with me, I'd like to invite the folks from Tony's Hay and Grain up to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, so again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott DeRosa, and I'm a member of the Economic Development Advisory Council. And on behalf of our City Council and EDAC, I am pleased to assist Mayor Grundmeyer with awarding this month's Business Appreciation Award to Tony's Hay and Grain. The store in which Tony's Hay and Grain does business from has been operating in Norco for many years. In 1985, Tony Cervantes, who was a hay supplier to the store, decided to acquire the retail business. According to Tony's daughter, Eileen, Tony absolutely loved agriculture and animals, which made Norco the ideal place to purchase and grow his new business. Thirty-four years later, Tony's family continues his legacy by supplying Norco with its hay and grain needs. Because of his family's love for Norco, as well as their appreciation for the loyal clientele, Tony's Hay and Grain has happily supplied hay and wood shavings to the Norco Fair, horse week events, and they've also supported Silver Lake's equine affair and New Beginnings Community Church. Having Tony's Hay and Grain in our city has generated employment, tax revenue, and many of our community events have benefited from their generosity year after year. So a big thanks goes out to Tony's Hay and Grain for being an active part of Norco, and congratulations to them for their efforts of being recognized, well, for their efforts for being recognized by the City and EDAC councils.
So as somebody that has benefited from the generosity of Tony's time and time again, I would like to say thank you from the Norco Fair. I know you guys are always so supportive, and it's so appreciated, so thank you very much. It's my honor to present to you this certificate that says Tony's Hay and Grain for its more than 30 years of gracious service to loyal Norco customers and celebrating the spirit of Horstown, USA in every transaction. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank all of you guys, the community, and us women get emotional, my husband, and all of the employees.
Stand up, guys.
Without you, we couldn't do it. That's all I really have to say, but you guys are awesome. Thank you, Norco. Thanks a lot.
Do you want to have anybody come up for a picture? We always take a picture.
Yeah. Okay, so all of those employees, if you want to come up, we'll take a picture real quick.
Come up, Manny.
All right, so at this time, we're going to move on to our City Council regular business items. Item number one is the City Council Communications and Reports on Regional Boards. So we will start with Mayor Protem Hanna.
One of the topics at our RTA meeting, Riverside Transit Agency, the bus, is they're going to have some community meetings in the next two months to talk about increasing the bus fares. I don't think they've increased them for 10 years, so that's one of the topics. The other is the RCTC, the Transportation Committee, and I've got another video here to show you the progress on the 15 freeway expansion. Hopefully, it'll play.
Fifteen facts on the 15 Express Lanes. This edition highlights the progress on the project since construction began in early 2018. Construction of the 15 Express Lanes project is now about one-third complete, and the new lanes remain on schedule to open in 2020. Along the 15-mile corridor, paving, bridge widening, and sound wall construction are continuing. Key milestones include completing two bridges with four other bridges in various stages of widening. Crews are widening a total of 11 bridges. Completing four of the six sound walls. The final two sound walls will be finished this spring. Paving various sections of roadway within the existing median. Maintaining an accident and injury-free record during the first year of construction. RCTC is using a design-build method to speed up project delivery. This method uses the same designer and contractor, which saves time and costs while ensuring quality. Construction innovations are also in place. An onsite concrete plant, called a batch plant, was built to reduce the distance for crews to haul cement to the paving machines. A conveyor belt was also installed at the batch plant to allow trucks to be loaded and travel within the median. These innovations improve project efficiency and decrease effects to motorists. The project team continues to coordinate with the neighboring Limonite Avenue and Cahalka Road interchange projects. Project teams are working closely and adjusting workloads to allow all three projects to stay on schedule. A robust construction schedule is planned for the next 12 months. Watch for more roadway paving, continued widening of bridges, and installing the tolling system infrastructure. The 15 Express Lanes team reminds you to be alert of construction activities and reduce speeds within the project corridor. Want to stay connected? Sign up on our website or by text for weekly construction updates.
Next up is Councilman Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. I went to a lot of events, but two of the major ones is the WCE, which is Western Community Energy. The Western Community Energy is a community choice energy program that gives local governments the opportunity to buy electricity directly from its source and offer it to the community at rates competitive to those offered by the utility provider. The WCE's benefit includes providing local elected officials the ability to set rates and develop energy programs instead of state officials allow residents and businesses to have a choice of where their electricity comes from. And the reason I bring that up is this Monday night, this coming Monday, at the town hall meeting, the members of the WCE will be there at the Nellie Weaver Hall to promote their program, and I hope everybody here attends so you can get better. Please let your neighbors know about it. It's an important thing. It's coming, and it's something that, you know, at this point, we're looking at a 2% savings on your electric bill. You may not think that much, but for some of you, it might be quite a bit. The other meeting I attended, and that was actually today, Supervisor Spiegel has selected me and going to nominate me to be on the Zone 2, the Riverside County Flood Control District, Water Conservation District. So with that, one of the things they talked about, and just for, out of all the projects that were approved, there were 19 district projects and 22 joint projects in the district that are coming up over the next five years. These are all flood control projects, mostly, also to include some water conservation projects, but it's amazing how many projects just in Zone 2, which is essentially the Corona-Norco area that we are there in, a part of Lake Matthews. The one thing that they did talk about, and this is something that is very important for residents, if you have a, if you looked at what happened in Lake Elsinore, where you had the flooding and all that, the damage is done, it wasn't all because of the holy fire in the fire area. Part of the problem they found with that was the encroachment violations that occur when residents build private flood control areas. You have, just to give you an idea, there's flood control channels that are on county or municipal properties, and then you have flood control channels that are, that crisscross private property. Those are the ones that they're having problems with. We have easements in our area for power lines and things, and we have people to build on. We have easements in our city that where people just extend their property line a little bit, maybe build that barn or that shed. And this is what occurred in part of Lake Elsinore. And what happened was, the upper part of the channel was great, and when it got down to the lower part of the channel, where people built in there, and what you saw on TV with that damage is because somebody built property or extended or built a building or decided to build a shed or put the horse corral in the flood district, in the floods, channel. So that's one of the things they're going to be looking at as they go through this year and everywhere else, is to start enforcing that, get them out of those areas. So that's all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Bash?
I attended a lot of meetings, but very quickly, and I don't know if it's up there or not. I attended the hearing to prepare for the hearing for the Energy Commission on the Corona Reliability Circle City Project, and Corona's position is basically that they don't need the project. And so what I did was, as soon as I came out, I talked to the city manager and to the city attorney, and they're now in the loop with all of that in terms of what the plans are. I'm not going to do too much on that. Something else that's not in there, I had a meeting actually with Rusty Bailey, and he told me, which I know the city manager knows, that we now have the connection that's going through the cemetery in terms of the water project. But he was trying to convince me that we needed to support the high transmission reliability project going through the river. And I told him I didn't think we would support anything less than undergrounding, particularly given the high fire danger that occurs there. Already, people are getting notifications that their insurance is being canceled if they're budding up next to that. So they have to get high fire insurance. But it was a nice conversation. One of the side notes, you may recall, that last February, we were, after 10 years, the Navy base was voted unanimously to be put on the National Register of Historic Places. The Navy has chosen to interpret Section 106 of the Federal Historic Code, and not the Navy, it is actually the, their federal historic officer says that they don't have to adhere to the 90 days. Interestingly enough, they're actually being sued by the former keeper of the register, which is the highest preservation officer in the United States, because he says that they have misinterpreted the law. So that's moving through the courts. Interestingly enough, we sent something to Bill Manley, who's our representative in Washington, and he confused Norco with Norfolk, but one of the things that he said is that they need to see if, what the impact will be of the historic designation. That is illegal. You cannot take that into consideration. So in some ways, we feel it's just more of the same of trying to say nothing historic occurred in Norco at that Navy base. One of the other things that's happening, which is kind of interesting, the PBS Channel out of San Bernardino, we're going to be filming on March 8th at CRC. They're doing a segment on the very first wheelchair basketball game in history, so that's going to be fun. A whole bunch of people are going to be there to be filmed. I really appreciate the fact that CRC is allowing us to film at the site. That's actually the gym where the first game took place. One of the things that I've been asked by Supervisor Spiegel is that she desperately wants something from Norco on her wall at her office. My recommendation is, there's a gentleman that makes some pretty amazing signs that have our stamp on them, that's the American flag and then the symbol of Norco, but I think it's something that maybe, if we can have a discussion tonight, something to give to her so to represent Norco in her office. And finally, she also, because she feels that Norco is such a patriotic town, she would like someone from Norco to represent the Veterans Committee that works on veterans' rights and problems and things like that. We have a couple of names that are coming out of the Veterans Committee, and I'm not sure how we want to do that, but we are going to send over a couple of names that came out of the Veterans Committee, but I wanted to make sure that the council was okay with that in terms of, one of the names was Don Farmer, since he just retired from the base, he might be a good choice. But if there's no problems with that, if you don't mind the Veterans Committee submitting names, but the nice thing is, she really wants somebody from Norco to be that representative from her district. Other than that, I just went to a lot of stuff, so that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. So you can tell the review of our CDA board meeting. The only thing I wanted to add to that is that the pipeline that is laying on Old Hamner Road right now, our target date is to pull that back through underneath the river next week, approximately the 26th and 27th. So if any of you are interested in watching that and having a field trip, we'll just get with Chad on that. He'll make all the arrangements, so you have your vests and hard hats and all that good stuff, so. But that's where we're targeted, is for next week. Thank you.
Thank you. And then for my report, today Congressman Calvert came to Norco to meet with myself, Mayor Protem Hanna, and several of the staff members, just to go over issues that we feel are important to Norco. Some things we discussed included local control and some things that are being imposed on us by our state government, homelessness, and then some, looking at ways he could help us with some issues we have in the Santa Ana River. So that will conclude item number one. We'll move to item number two, which is city consent items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three of the agenda. Does the council have any items to be pulled?
Mayor, can I pull E and F, please?
Any other items?
We'll do approve the rest.
They're second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve items A through D on consent. Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously. All right. So at this time, we'll move to Agenda Item Three, which is items pulled from the city consent calendar. So we'll start with item E. Councilman Hoffman?
Yeah, Mayor. Brian, I don't, I think it's great that you're getting a new bus and that, but it's something I think I've talked about before. We need to start getting rid of these surplus vehicles. I mean, that's, I go up to the yard, up at Ingalls, and I'm picking on you, but there's two, there's an old truck and a van there, and we need to start getting rid of this stuff, because it's going to get vandalized, it gets old, it gets, it just, where, it's not helping its preservation or its value. So that was my main concern upon this.
As this one is identified in this report, this will be put to auction. The one truck that we have that you're talking to, when auction comes, it'll be transported. The problem is, we don't have a lot of room in the yard where the auction would take place, so until that auction, I believe the auction's going to be scheduled this spring.
Okay. Okay, thank you. With that, no other comments. Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item E. Motion passes unanimously. All right, very good. So we will move on to item F. Councilman Hoffman?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, and I just go again, back to you, Brian, and I appreciate what Little League is doing, but I'm a little disappointed in staff, is I don't have any pictures. I don't have any pictures in my staff. I don't even know what I'm approving. There it is. So those are the shades that are going to go up?
This is actually an example of the shade structures that would be going over the bleachers at Wayne Macon. This is a project that was identified as a public improvement by Norco Little League. They have done fundraising to raise the funds to do this particular project, because this is an improvement or an asset improvement, requires the council to approve the improvement. And I believe, and Scotty can maybe talk a little bit more about their timeframe, that they plan on trying to get one done right away and then move towards the next ones, and it would be done right towards the end of the season, I believe, to get them all completed. But this project would start right away with at least getting one of the fields covered. And so this is basically what the shade structures would look like.
Thank you. And the longevity of these projects?
My understanding is, is 10 years is what the manufacturer recommends on the actual netting. The netting is, has a UV rating on it to reduce the sunlight that comes in and cancer effects, so it does have a high rating. You'll see, particularly in climates where we have a lot of warm weather, this is pretty common, and to start to do in parks to where people sit for long periods a day. And if you're at a baseball game, you could be sitting for hours, as you know, watching games, particularly on Division One, so up on field number one. So this would actually provide protection for those people who are watching the games.
And I noticed in the staff report, they're going to, the company's going to provide the engineering spec for it all, and be within our wind?
Yeah, we've actually have had a pre-meeting with the building official, and the engineering drawings will go in for a complete plan check to meet all specifications and requirements by the city.
Okay, thank you.
And I do have representatives here from Norco Little League, if you'd like to, I know Scotty's here, the president of Norco Little League, and I also think we have the project manager assigned to this also here this evening, if you have any other questions.
Cheryl, do we have cards? Yes, Mayor, I have two cards.
Good evening, councilmembers. So anyway, so kind of what has brought on this project is, so we've moved forward from selling candies and stuff like that, and what we do now is, we do a hit-a-thon, and what brought this hit-a-thon in was to raise the funds for these shade covers for the future of Little League, Norco, to better the fields. So another thing I just want to bring up, so I don't know if you guys noticed, we have the best fields around, all around, we really do. So that's why district comes to us every year and wants us to hold state tournaments, district tournaments, and we're also looking at this, it's just going to improve that even more for them to hold more. And so we look at this as a great thing for the facility, for Norco, for Little League, just for everybody. So, and again, so like you guys are talking about, you know, the rating is going to be 150 mile an hour rating for the windproof, you know, the UV, I mean, just so on and so forth. So we're kind of hoping you guys would bless this project, and if there's anything else you wanted to...
Yeah, do you guys have any questions?
I'm sorry, this is, this is our VP of Operations, he's the one that's been heading up the project.
Sorry. Do you guys have any questions on the project? Honestly, what really started this project was, one of the other fantastic things that these shade covers provide is also ball protection. One of the things, I don't know how many of you guys actually watch baseball games out there, balls are notorious for flying up and over that ginormous backstop and bouncing on those bleachers. I myself have been hit by a couple balls, and softball, they travel over there, so at least this starts on Field Three eventually. In the long run, maybe a year, maybe two, just depending on how our fields go, we will do Field Two, and we will keep going all the way up to our fields. So Field One, ideally, if all goes well, we're looking maybe six years, but it all just depends on our field or our budget. There you go. That's the word I was looking for.
And so the reason we're starting on Field Three is that is right next to softball, and constantly, softballs come over and hit people in the stands. I've actually been, I umpire a lot, I've actually been out there and umpiring and actually been hit by softballs coming over, which, you know, that's here nor there, but we're really looking to protect the parents in the stands, because I've seen people really get hit hard and get hurt by those softballs coming over, and that's just going to protect us, protect the city, you know. So that's why we're going to start on Field Three, because that's where the issue came from, move down to Two, move down to One.
And like Brian had originally also said, the cover that we are going with is 92% UV protection.
It's the highest rating that they offered.
Yeah, that was the highest rating on that one, so. And it also goes with, that nice cream color kind of goes with the rest of, even though this one is green, it's a cream color, which goes with pretty much everything that Wayne Macon kind of already color schemed. There you go.
Yeah, as you know, the snack bar's cream, so the cream covers will kind of match the snack bar, you know, and everything else.
Okay, does the council have any other questions for the speakers?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank you. Please thank the volunteers. I'm just always amazed at how much work you guys do. The fields are so good because of the work that you do. This is just another example of volunteers really trying, and, you know, for the kids, I know you do it just for the kids, and I want to thank you very much. I'm going to support this 100%.
I was just picking on him because he didn't put any pictures in my book, so I had to pick on him.
I know, we heard there was going to be a cool presentation.
I know, so I had to make him, I heard he had a PowerPoint, so I had to have him dig it out. But no, I want to compliment you guys. You guys have done an excellent job up there on the fields, always, and as a former softball dad and a grandpa of a kid that plays ice hockey here... dad and a grandpa of a kid that plays, I actually carry out, I still carry out that blue tart, put it over the, for the kids. So this is 100% better, and I really appreciate what you guys have done. Thank you.
Yeah. And so I'm not sure if this is the time or the place to bring this up, but since we're kind of doing this big improvement onto the fields, what I was kind of asking is if the city would waive the permit fees to get this project done.
That's actually going to be a topic of discussion will be.
Okay.
In just a minute.
Perfect, perfect. Anything else?
I don't think so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
So I guess that's my segue, Brian. I had emailed you the other day about if there would be fees associated with the permit, and you said there would be. My point of view on the topic is, we have volunteers working really, really hard in fundraising, a lot of money to put on a project, and since this becomes a city asset, I think the least we can do to be in partnership with organizations that want to do things like these at our city facilities is to have them have a no-fee permit. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we have a no-fee permit for this project. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to have a no-fee permit for this project. Any discussion?
Okay, please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so now with that being done, we still have to vote on the approval of the project.
Let's move through.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item F.
I'll take a verbal roll call vote on that. Mayor Precum Hanna? Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Gunnmeyer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item of business is number four, public comments. This is the time when persons in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete a speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so that you may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the city council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The city council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment.
Bonnie Slager?
Just wanted to, Ted already mentioned it, I believe, the town hall meeting this coming Sunday, Monday, the 25th. I hope everybody in the audience will be there. And in addition to the topic that Ted talked about, our city attorney is on the agenda this time, for a new face up there. So thank you to talk about the housing legislation, which is huge for this town. So I hope everybody comes to get up to speed on that. And then March 9th is Norco Horsemen's Casino Night, and the purpose of this event is to raise money to give scholarships to high school students that are going on with their education after high school, so I hope you'll all attend. I have tickets with me, they're $20 in advance and 25 at the door, so get your tickets in advance. If you don't have your money tonight, coincidentally, Tony's Feed is also selling the tickets as part of our community. So again, thanks to Tony's Feed. So see everybody Monday night, March 9th, and support those events. And our NHA Trail Elves have been out working again, and they met the challenge of the smaller fencing unbroken feather, I think it is, and figured out a way to use the larger poles than the smaller poles. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
All right, so we will move on to item number five, which is our discussion action item. Just so that everyone knows, the order of presentation for our discussion items are as follows. We will have our staff report presentation, questions of staff by council, questions by council, discussion by council, and then the action taken by council. So item A this evening is mid-year amendments to the fiscal year 2018-2019 annual budgets, and that will be Gina.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I am pleased to present the fiscal year 2018-2019 mid-year report. As you remember, we adopted the budget in June of 2018 for the year starting July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. And on the consent calendar, we had the second quarter report through December 31st, and there's some detail there if anybody viewing would like to see that detail. Now we're going to look at December through a little bit of February. We get our property tax in January, our VLF, and we're able to project better into the future for year-end. In terms of revenues, we are anticipating a net increase in revenues of $896,000, and I'll be going into detail on those categories. And I think I need to press this. Let's see. There you go. And in terms of expenditures, we'll be seeing a net decrease of $36,000, mainly due to a large reduction in anticipated costs associated with Measure R. For other funds, our gas tax funds is seeing a decrease of $109,000. I did present a revision to the staff report with revised figures for gas tax and SB1. SB1, gas tax will be a total of $581,000 this next year, basically due to a delay in a tax increase for that particular revenue. Water and sewer operating funds, a lot of activity in this area. Water revenues are projected to decrease by $310,000. That's going back to a trend in consumption of about two years ago. In the fall of that year, we noticed a decrease in consumption. We had an increase last year, and this year, we're also seeing a decrease. So I'm projecting a decrease in revenue overall, partly because of decreasing consumption, but also because we've transferred to businesses, to the City of Riverside's water system back in November. Sewer revenue is decreasing by $120,000, primarily due to the impacts of the reduced water consumption for the California Rehabilitation Center. So less water consumed, less water in the sewer system. We also have a credit for our Western Riverside County Regional Wastewater Authority loan payment. This is the first payment of 20, and fortunately, it was reduced to almost $5,000 for the first year. So we're seeing a reduction there. In terms of water and sewer capital funds, this is, first year we're actually creating a reserve for our funds, based on approval a few years ago, when we adjusted the water rate adjustments per water rate study and sewer study that we presented. For the water fund, as of June 30th, we're seeing $4.5 million in the water operating fund. That's where we actually accumulate the revenue, and that is at year-end. And what we're going to do with that $4.5 million is we're going to allocate 1.1 million to our operating and rate stabilization reserve. The water fund has two reserves at this point, one for operating, which will take till about 2021 for us to reach a three-month reserve. And in terms of the rate stabilization, that's going to take us to 25, 26 to gain $2 million for that. At the end of establishing this first year of reserve, we'll have 3.4 million left over, which we can transfer to the water capital fund, which Chad is very excited about, and to establish the goals that were originally set with the study several years ago. For the sewer fund, we've accumulated 7.8 million in the sewer operating fund, and when we establish the operating reserves, it isn't required to have a rate stabilization fund. As of June 30th, that'll be about $1 million, and that results in $6.8 million being transferred to the sewer capital fund for capital projects. We are establishing three new funds this year. Measure R Fund, we've met with our consultant, HDL, and identified that we'll be receiving about $1 million for the final quarter of the year, April, May, and June. And we've identified contractual services with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for implementing Measure R of $185,000, and a proposed amount of $10,000 for third-party costs to conduct the initial oversight committee selection process. For our maintenance rehabilitation fund, now that this has matured and we have identified that these revenues will be ongoing, we like to create a separate fund for accountability purposes. And we're identifying that the amount for this current year to be spent will be $587,000, and that's fund balance from the prior year, as well as new money from this year. The Nancy Adrian Newman Trust Fund was presented to you recently, and this was a generous contribution by Nancy Adrian for the Party Partners Program of $133,000. That will be budgeted for in the fiscal year 1920 budget process. This mid-year report also includes some personnel actions related to the information technology fund, a reclassification of an information technology technician to an IT technology administrator. Budgeted overtime will pay for the salary difference. And then another position, which may take until July 1st to be filled, is the water sewer, water utilities engineer, and hiring is anticipated around July 1st. And again, these are, one's an upgrade and one's a new position. General fund revenues, I'll go into a little bit of detail here, and then I'll show you the visual version of these. In terms of property tax, we're seeing about a $50,000 increase in our residual tax increment, which is a result of the bond refundings that we had, and a small amount in our property tax increase. We're hopeful that next year, due to increased valuations, this, well, our base amount will increase. Sales tax, we're identifying $267,000 in increases, and I like to say that is ongoing, we're not quite sure yet. I do know that this amount is a payment from prior year, delay from the state of California due to, let's see, difficult implementation of a software program, which is what it is at that. And so we're getting double payments. We do have a lot of development going in the city, so we're hopeful for the future, but conservatively, conservatively, we'll say this is a one-time amount. In terms of other taxes, we're looking at about $27,000 in TOT increase. Franchise fees, $10,000 in refuse franchise revenue. Motor vehicle license in lieu fees, $51,000 increase based on the, we get two payments a year, we receive the first one in January, and we can project forward with that. fines and penalties, $7,000 in parking citation, and a one-time code legal recovery revenue. Interest income is definitely increasing, that's a conservative projection in the first place, and we're identifying due to investments that will receive more interest income. Community development fees increasing by $326,000. That is a one-time revenue, as it traditionally is in the community development area. That's from, majority is from the Shea Properties building permit process. Community services and recreation revenues, about $10,000 there, we have some revenues that have met the budgeted amount for the year. Other revenues, $73,000, mainly due to damage claims reimbursements at the senior center, emergency medical subscription, and refuse billings, for a total of $896,000 increase in revenues. And here is a visual version for you in terms of sales tax. This shows how the city has managed since the recession and developed our economic development, a tax base, to the point where we're most likely at the $7 million mark, but with the extra bump from the one-time revenue from prior year, we're looking at 7.3. We're hoping to have some news in the next budget cycle that that will be sustained. And I should make a note that we are seeing increases in this last quarter of discount stores, new businesses, fuel and service station activity. And again, this is a visual indication of the increases. You'll see that community development fees surpasses the budgeted expectation, and $70,000 in interest income. Moving to expenditures, we have the reduction in Measure R-related program costs, identified as 101,000 reduction. $23,000 was spent during the year. We have a reimbursement from PERMA, premium reimbursement and liability insurance that we get fortunately annually, a reduction. Code enforcement, a one-time increase in code enforcement-related litigation costs of $15,000. Request for upgrading and replacing light wall packs at City Hall for $8,000. For $3,100 replenishment inventory of replacement bulbs. For $2,000, a replacement of power and hand tools. For $12,000, ice machine for the fire station and grease trap for Nellie Weaver, for the senior center. $2,000 for increased warm and cool center operation days. $22,000 for repairs to the senior center facade related to the damage that occurred. Building improvements for the senior center to replace the entry doors for ADA compliance, and $10,000 for lighting repairs for sure soccer fields, for a net decrease of $36,000. And again, here's the visual, you can see that non-departmental is being reduced by about $122,000, and minor increases in other areas per the requests that I just highlighted. And a brief look at our estimated fund balance for June 30th, 2019. You'll see we have our audited beginning balance of 11.7 million. When we add our revenues and the net increase to revenues, and subtract the expenditures, and subtract the net decrease in expenditures, we get to 11.3 million dollars in reserves. I should say, a portion of that includes $365,000 in deposits. This equates to a total of basically 10.9 million dollars in reserves, and I wanted to note that 25% of this reserve is 5.1 million dollars. So we have met the city council's reserve level again. And this graph indicates the path the city's taken over the last eight years or so. That's again showing the remnants of the recession coming out of it and accumulating a reserve balance. And this again represents 54% of the, the fund balance of 1.3 million represents 54% of the 18 and 19 general fund expenditures. And finally, I wanted to save the best for last. We started the year, the budget, with a $1.3 million deficit. With these adjustments of $896,000 in revenue increases, again, some of those are one-time, a large portion of it is one-time, with a net decrease in expenditures of $36,000, a total reduction of $933,000 for a remaining deficit of $412,000 for the year. And if you have any questions for staff?
We'll start with Councilman Hanna.
Good job, Gina, for you and your staff over there on this report and all the hard work that you folks do over there. On this last page that you just did, the general fund expenditures, the $36,000, which in parentheses is what we were short this time on it there.
Actually, that would be on, let's see, we'll go back. That's how much we're requesting. So it's a net, we're reducing Measure R budgeted monies, we originally had 125,000, we're reducing that by 101,000, and then we're adding, Brian has some items to fix some facility maintenance issues, so that nets out to $36,000 decrease.
Okay. That repair work that you're talking about, Brian, is one of them that Bill over at the senior center that we noticed a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, there are two things. The senior center facade is a result of an accident. We received a claim adjustment for that, so that is, and Gina identified that as part of the revenues to offset that expenditure. Most recently, the leak we have, you don't have that in there, that'll be coming at year-end. And once we've completed what that full cost will be, we're still in the process right now, I'm dealing with that. The other repairs, one is the ice machine, replacement of the existing ice machine upon The other repairs, one is the ice machine, replacement of the existing ice machine upon, at Station 47, that is a requirement that we have, it's an OSHA requirement, so that machine had to be replaced. The grease trap at Nellie Weaver Hall is totally shot. It has to be replaced or that kitchen cannot be used. The, the other items that I think we have in there are some repairs we had on fields one and two, and then also was the outside of City Hall here, we had a loss of power, so we had to have that repaired. One of our poles that was in the parking lot was totally, has, totally had started to rot out at the base, that had to come down, that'll be, that has been also part of that repair. The pole, I think it's in, will be here sometime at the end of, not next week, but the following week, and then that'll go in, and that's part of that cost as well. And that's to eliminate the parking lot. And then because of potential dark areas, we improved the wall packs to LED lighting on that, on City Hall to improve the lighting in the parking lot to reduce the dark spots that we have for safety and trip hazards. And so those are pretty much most of those repairs that I've identified, unless I missed something.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Gina, good job.
Councilman Hoffman.
Gina, I just have a question on that. You've got the mid-year adjustment on the last page, we're still going to be $412,000, I mean $412,000 in the deficit, correct? So with the last column, where you saw the plus, that's your adjustment is a 93, so that's my, okay, that's, so we're still, we're a lot better than we were at 1.3, okay. Now, a little bit on, during your, you're talking about, and I don't know if this is to you or to Chad or to Andy, currently you're, you're looking at hiring a new position here. Currently, is that position a contract position?
Yes.
So we're going to eliminate the contract position and make this a city position, correct?
Correct.
And so we're actually, depending what the contract is, just giving a dollar amount, if you have one, what's the difference going to be as far as that goes, do we know?
I'm not sure I would refer to Andy, because it involves obviously their benefits, et cetera, as far as, salary-wise, it should be a wash.
A wash.
I think that is correct.
Okay.
Probably not impact, about $50,000 really.
Okay. Good, all right. Sorry Dominic, but we keep our home in house. Let's see. And then, Brian, and I appreciate you doing that at Nellie Weaver. We spent a fortune on putting in new air conditioning units, like that thing usable, so I don't have any problem trying to replace, to make that kitchen worthwhile. And then, and I don't know if Gina, this is your area, I'm looking at, do we know why, I mean, the gas tax revenue and the SB1 funds are, were shorter than we anticipated?
The, in terms of gas tax, it's the 2103 portion of that, and they, I think the legislature refused to, or decided not to implement an increase last year, which is impacting this year. Originally budgeted 200,000, and due to the delay, we're not getting it. As a result, this next year, they have to do a large increase, so we'll be experiencing a higher gas tax.
So that's why we're $23,000 sure than what?
A net, that would be a net for, for gas tax. And for SB1, I think it's a moving target. This is the second year, and it's been, gas tax and SB1 is just moving. I'm hoping for Chad's sake, it's a fixed amount and it doesn't change much by year end, because he's anticipating to spend an entire amount by June 30th.
So no matter what they told us at the state, it's, it's never going to be consistent? Is that what you're telling me?
No, it never has in my entire career, I think.
No, SB1 though.
Oh, SB1? That'll be, time will tell. It's related to gas tax, so it depends on.
Sacramento. Sacramento. All right, I didn't say it very loud. All right, thank you.
Councilman Bash.
So the big reason that we're 412,000 to 118 is basically we did some pretty high-ticket items that we had to do, correct? I mean, that's really, we had the field expenditure and stuff like that, there were things like that that put us over budget, correct? No? Yes?
Field expenditures?
Yeah. Well, I mean, lighting repairs and things like that. I'm just tickled pink, because as Burwin can tell you, back in 2010, we were, we were broke, and it's nice that we hit that target of 10 million, we're now sitting on 11 million, so I really appreciate that. I do have one question, the Nancy Adrian Newman Trust Fund. Brian, is there any matching grants that we can go after on that?
No, that, this is an endowment, so this is.
But I think, is there some way we can match?
That's to be determined, we'll go out and solicit. And that doesn't mean that this fund that has been not set up, that doesn't receive additional donations.
Right.
Towards that would not be put into that fund balance, but at this time, I couldn't answer if there's a matching fund yet and that, but we'll explore those options.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of these may be questions, but they may, I may want to move them back over into a discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll just kind of take it as it comes here, Gina. Item four, franchise fees, that we have a, basically a surplus or an increase of $10,000 in franchise fees. I would like to bring that up under discussion regarding franchise fees. An item 11, other revenues, the way this read was that category is being increased by 73,000 due to increasing fire EMS. Are we changing our $4 monthly fee?
No, we're not.
Okay, so what is the fire EMS then, that you refer to?
It seems like there's more demand for it, so this is on your water bill, and you have a choice to, to have that.
So we're, we're getting more people subscribing to it?
Yes, they're deciding not to remove themselves from the program.
Okay.
So it's, it's something that is on your utility bill, and you let us know if you would not like it on. So a lot of individuals are choosing to keep it.
All right, but we're still keeping it at the $4.
Correct.
The non-department, this is on the budget in the Measure R. I was a little confused Gina, that in your report, talk about general fund adopted expenditures decreased by 36,000 due to reductions in anticipated costs associated with Measure R. And that confuses me with the, that our costs were lower and we're, we're reducing by $101,000.
Correct, it was a net decrease, so it's, the majority of the decrease was Measure R.
Correct.
So it's kind of the hidden part of that.
Okay, so it's part, part in that 101. So my question now is for the city clerk, have we, will we, or have we received any costs from the registrar of voters for having Measure R on the ballot?
I have not received an invoice yet from the registrar voter's office. It should be coming within the next two weeks, two to four weeks.
And do we have any anticipated cost of, in other words, this 101's going to change? We're going to get an expenditure from the registrar for having Measure R on the ballot, correct?
Correct, yes.
Guestimate?
I don't have a guestimate. I've asked that of the registrar's office, but I, I didn't get a response on a, on a range.
So we should have an asterisk there, I guess is what I'm saying.
Those costs are budgeted separately in a different department, under a different line item. So we are still holding the budget for that.
Okay.
When we receive the bill, those budget will be charged, and the bill may exceed that budget amount. And if it does, then that's something we'll deal with as, as part of year-end process.
Okay, which would?
But it's not, it's not budgeted on this line item.
Okay, but, but that could affect this 101.
Yeah, yeah.
So then, my next one's on facilities management, and reading about the ice machine. And my question is to Chad, does public, does Public Works have an ice machine?
We do.
Okay, that's used by Parks and Rec and?
I think it's only used by Public Works at our office.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that one's capable enough to supply the needs of the field guys?
Yes.
Doesn't make snow cones or anything?
Not yet.
Okay.
It's an attachment.
We could upgrade you if you wanted to.
I'll let him know.
All right. And then, I guess this is going to go back to you Chad on, like water service revenue. And so I, I understand the reduction in revenue from losing the two customers, or transferring the two customers to Riverside, but where are we going to see this on the expenditure side? Because in, in the discussions, it was that by Riverside picking up those two customers, our expenditures would be reduced proportionately, so that we would end up as a, as basically a push.
Right, the assumption is, is that, that demand is no longer there, we're not going to purchase that amount of water in the year to supply their needs. Again, but that can be offset by, there could be a higher demand, lower demand. Right now, we're just seeing a little bit lower demand than normal, because it's been a cooler year, so that's why the overall water demands have, trend has gone back down a little bit versus what we expected, and that just will coincide, we hopefully won't have to purchase as much. So our, our expenditures should match in that we're not going to be bringing up as much revenue, because people aren't using the water. So it should balance, you know, as demand goes up, our.
And when will we see that? That reduction in expenditures?
I mean, in theory, you would see it now, but it's hard to show it as far as a exact trend, because water demand is not linear through that the whole year, so I can't, I can't show it to you grammatically or graphically that, hey, because these two left, you can see it dropped, and our water import dropped. But again, the assumption is, we don't need that much water for the year, so we assume we, we won't purchase that much water. But we may purchase more, because demands go up and down, so it's just going to be yearly cycle, but it's not going to impact overall revenue of the department.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other two are on the personnel items, which I'd rather talk about under discussion, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So the only question that I have was under the personnel actions on the IT reclassification. With the reclassification in the staff report, it does mention that we had a contract position, so with the reclassification, will the contract then disappear?
No, the, the contract position will remain, but the organization or the number of people we need to complete the function will remain the same. However, because it is a contract, we may be adjusting those hours up and down based on need.
Is it staff's opinion that we would see a reduction in that contract then, or?
Well, that's really based on demand. The demand for IT right now is continuing to increase as function becomes more needed, so at this time, I don't foresee a reduction at this time. However, it may, as we migrate towards that, that might, there may be adjustments made. I can, currently right now, our other full-time IT position just provided us notice that he will be moving on, because he's received another opportunity. So right away, I'm already down a man, and so that contract position's going to backfill that till we can fill the other position, so it's, it is definitely needed.
Okay, and is the increased demand because of increased staffing or increased technology?
Technology and the need, and software, and software upgrades, which is constantly changing.
All the time. Okay, thank you. Does Council have any other questions of staff? So we'll go ahead and go to discussion, so does anybody, Mr. Newton, I know you mentioned you had a couple of items under discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, franchise fees. So this is due to better anticipated receipts. Back in 2014, with our ad hoc committee and our acceptance by city council, I'm just going to read one note here. "It was suggested that a portion of the increased franchise fees be dedicated to funding for decomposed granite for horse trails, traffic officers, and other infrastructure and road improvement projects. The city manager will recommend the amounts to be earmarked as part of the budget process." I don't see a recommendation, but if we do have an increase in franchise fees, and that was something that we agreed to back in 2014, how can we transfer some of this money from franchise fees to where we can be doing at this point, you know, remedial road repair, like we do with our outside subcontractor, like Hardy and Harper, you know, where we put together a list, or increase maybe some trail maintenance? If we, $10,000 would at least fix some potholes. So how can we take this increase from the franchise fees and put it towards, say, road repair for conversation?
So a couple of things.
Okay.
All the franchise fee revenues are currently accounted for in the general fund. As part of the budget process, the city council can always decide to allocate a portion of general fund revenues to any program, including trail maintenance and other street repairs. So this is a question that should be addressed as part of the budget process. We can also make a, if the city council chooses to, can earmark 10,000 or have $10,000 transferred from the general fund to the street maintenance fund or to the trail maintenance fund this evening, if, if that's a choice of the city council. But with respect to traffic officers, I do want to remind you that the general fund has added one dedicated traffic deputy.
Correct, right.
And so that, that goal has, was contemplated back when the ad hoc committee was, was, was formed, has in some ways been met with the increased, increase in, in franchise fee revenues. But again, these are the city council discretion in terms of how those funds are ultimately decided, expended as part of the budget process, which is what we have this evening.
And, and I, I get that Andy, I was just reading that statement in, in full. What I'd like to see is, if council concurs, if we have $10,000, I think that if we could just put it towards some remedial street repair, and I think any little bit would help. I mean, we have a whole bunch of DG out on the streets that's been washed because of the rain, to get a street sweeper out there, or a Bobcat, whatever, and start getting our streets cleaned up, and maybe try to work on that list. That would be my recommendation to at least throw 10,000, this extra $10,000 towards assisting in some remedial street repair. And then, I think the other item I had was on the two personnel items, the mayor asked the first question about our contract employee that we have, and that, I certainly support this reclassification. I think Matt's going to do a good job and accept all the responsibility, and you'll do well, young man. So Chad, senior utilities engineer, at this point, we've been subcontracting out our water consultant, and. And we've had this discussion since last year that we were going to be wrapping up the use of the outside water consultant. And I know that went from July till some date in the fall and then to January. Are we still using the services of our water consultant?
Yes, two days a week.
Okay. And then, in your job description, well, you listed all these, let's see if I can find the right page, of what you're going to want this utilities engineer to do. Who's, at this present time, who's taking care of, or let's say, monitoring the water quality, the sewer, recycled water operations? All our reports are NPDS. All these typical duties. Who is doing all these duties right now?
So right now, we are doing it as a team. So you're talking about water. Again, that's the superintendent. It's the water quality techs that mainly take care of that issue as far as doing sampling, water quality handling. Myself, I do most and all the reporting to the state, producing the letters and the reports that come to that on a weekly or monthly, quarterly basis. And then we have the annual reports. That's usually delved out to the contract employee to help produce that and also work. What we just started doing is transition, working with the water quality techs and helping out with those reports. So we work as a team to try to work all together, get things moving and done and keep up with the requirements. When it comes to sewer, same process. Again, it's, is working on that. NPDS, a little bit different. We really not have a whole lot of monitoring of our NPDS, other than the bare minimums, which has been producing the annual report. And gathering that information is usually working with RKA to produce the report. Our senior engineer pulling that data with assistance of the inspector on that is getting his data information to produce that report. But the, with the state's requirements for NPDS and compliance and reporting have gone up dramatically. That level of work is going to significantly increase as far as the requirements for reporting and monitoring. So those level duties are definitely going to increase. In regards to trash, that's another issue that's greatly going to be increasing because of CalRecycle. Frankly, I've been doing all those duties and keeping up with that work and working with CalRecycle on their issues. We're going to know how a tremendous amount of work needs to be done in making sure all the commercial businesses are implementing the recycling of recyclables and organics, organic, excuse me, another time-consuming process. So we've been working as a village to just keep things going. But now we really recognize that the scrutiny on us and make sure we're compliant is going to become a lot steeper, and I need a full-time eyes, making sure this is their priority all the time. Plus, they're going to do a lot of these other duties. They're going to assist Sam in plan checks. And they're going to be doing the water quality sewer. They're pretty much going to be a utility person for me to take all the duties that I'm currently doing so I can focus on other projects. They're going to really do a lot of project management. That's where I need help, mostly in helping Sam so he can get to his normal duties, so he can handle all the RFIs and submittals, et cetera, and get these projects really even moving faster. So it's, we've been doing okay, and we're pushing things out, and we're not complaining. But the reality is, is we need, if we're going to lose the contract help, I need a full-time person.
So are you planning on keeping our contract water consultant onboard until you hire a senior utility engineer?
That's the intent, is we're going to go out as quickly as we can and try to recruit.
All right. So I have a problem with that because the discussions that Councilman Hoffman and I had previously with the city manager, my understanding was that we were going to, we started this back in July. We extended it because Chad, you had said you needed to finish up a couple of water projects. And don't hold me exactly to this date, but I believe it was like January, that project he was working on was going to be caught up, and then we were going to end that relationship with that consultant. And now you're saying that we're going to have to keep him till through the summer or until we hire a senior utilities engineer? And that's not the understanding of the meeting that we had?
I can help, but not-
I don't think there's an intent to keep him through the summer. I think it, our intent is with the approval of the classification, we would go quickly out to do that process and get it advertised. It usually is advertised for 30 days, so you're talking probably by the end of April, we're doing interviews. So likely, the person could be hired by the end of May or early June.
Yeah. Well, this was supposed to be ended in January. That's the problem I have.
And you're right. We did have discussions in terms of actually moving forward with hiring a full-time employee in lieu of water and sewer utilities consultant. Unfortunately, priorities do happen, and staff has a lot of other priorities to undertake. And the work still needs to be done. And given the length of time that it takes to recruit and fill this type of position, we're expecting that we'll begin that process now, hopefully before the beginning of the fiscal year, that position will be filled. I guess the overriding thing here is that the job that is currently being performed by the utilities consultant will still need to be done between now and July 1. And that's why we're asking for the city council to approve this job spec and this position so that we can move forward with the process in terms of trying to fill that position. Granted, we could have done it sooner based on our previous discussions, but the other thing is that I have had a lot of discussion with the Public Works Director in terms of how to structure this position, to make sure that the position meets our city needs. And that has been a lot of research and ongoing discussion to try to properly define this position that we, in a way that meets the city's needs. And that has taken some time as well.
I certainly support that we have this position of the senior utilities engineer. Chad, you do a great job. You, like all the other departments, are, you know, wearing two and three hats. I get that. But there's been issues with the outside consultant. I don't see the performance, even if it's two days a week, half the time just walking around and visiting. And so we're wasting money. And our agreement was, that was supposed to end in January. That's the objection I have. And I think you're just going to have to work a little bit harder till we hire this engineer. But we shouldn't be wasting money on social activities. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussions by council? All right. I would just like to thank you, Gina, and staff for the work on the budget. I know when we, I remember talking to you after the State of the City last year and going, man, I sure hope you can pull a rabbit out of the hat. You've come pretty darn close to doing that. So definitely appreciate that. And I also appreciate the work that the staff did to really help us have a grassroots effort on Measure R that saved, you know, a substantial amount of money. So I want to thank staff for the work and the time that was put in on behalf of that measure and for the residents of Norco for having the faith in council to allow us that opportunity to work with them and make the city a better place. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve, as written.
Under discussion. What's council's feeling on?
Do we have any costs under?
There was no public hearing.
No costs on this item?
Thank you.
So Mayor, under discussion, what's council's feeling on the $10,000 from franchise fees to be transferred to remedial street repair?
Maybe I could amend my motion to put that $10,000 towards trail repair as opposed to street repair? Or both, mix DG?
I would agree that I think the $10,000 would go farther for DG to replace from the storm damage we just had. If you try to put in the streets, it's not going to go very far. But I would, I would support trying to use it for the DG repair.
So I'll amend my motion to include the $10,000 goes toward the purchase of DG to repair road and trail repair.
Is that it? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So it's been properly moved and seconded to approve item 5A with the amendment of taking $10,000 to put towards trail slash street repairs. Okay, please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Next item of business is item 5B, a discussion regarding options for potential Proposition 218 hearing to increase the annual assessment for District Number Two, Western Pacific. And we will start with our staff report.
Mayor, members of the council, before each night is a discussion item related to landscape maintenance district number two, Western Pacific Track 25779. Staff is seeking direction regarding a preferred option for the potential of a Proposition 218 hearing to increase the annual assessment levy for landscape maintenance district This district is currently underfunded. And for us to increase the annual levy that we receive, it requires a Proposition 218 hearing to do that. So part of the discussion tonight will be our city engineer providing some options for us to have discussion on potential of what option would be the preferred choice to put on a ballot. As you know, it requires a majority, a majority plus one for, to pass a Prop 218 hearing. This will require an actual public hearing and hear, and a vote of those residents, and they would all be properly noticed to do that. What goes on exactly on that ballot will be part of our discussion tonight, and we may bring that back to council to finalize before that announcement or is given to the public or the residents of LMD Number Two. And so with that, I'm going to turn this over to Dominic, and he'll give a synopsis of the recommendations. I do want to note that earlier in the month, we had a meeting with the residents of Assessment District Number Two. It was a productive meeting, a lot of good discussion. They gave us some recommendations, as I've identified in the report, as if there was a choice, what theirs were, and what they didn't like also was identified in the report. So we'll go through that in this presentation. Thank you.
First off, I have to get all electronics, you know, in order here so I know how to understand this thing. In front of you right now is the boundaries of District Two. And basically, it's down Norco Ridge Ranch and the areas that are north of there. And we've all seen this over the last 15 years. The map hasn't changed. What you have in front of you now is the budget out of the 2018-19 budget, of which is approximately $188,000 of total expenditures related to that budget for that district. The negative part of it is that the funds that we collect have a shortfall in this budget of about $43,000, of which the city council took it upon themselves last year to say, yes, we will, let's move forward with a fully funded budget that takes care of the horse trails, repairs them when they get damaged, takes care of all the landscaping, makes sure there's water on all the medians, the slopes that are a part of the district. But again, it came with a price tag. And what that price tag did was it up the total deficit within the district over the last three or four years, brought it up to over $80,000. That's where we have the issue of what are we going to do moving forward with this? One, are we going to try to balance the budget so we don't have this deficit every single year by using a Prop 218? Are we going to try to collect back the monies that have been expended on the previous three years to get the city back whole for the eighty-some thousand dollars? And also, then we have like, what are we going to do with the trail fencing that's going to be necessary to be repaired? The trail fencing up there is, you know, 15, 16 years old. And while some of it looks pretty good, some of it is starting to go. As you know, in District Four, which we had the ability to replace all the fencing last year, everybody seems to be pretty happy with, we got a new fencing up there, the trails look great. Can we do the same thing here with District Two? Unfortunately, the way the districts were set up, District Four was set up highly different, and whoever put it together anticipated cost increases, et cetera, and set the assessment high enough so you had a levy every year that matched the improvements that you were necessary to get fixed. District Two was not set up that way. District Two was set up on a shoestring budget, of which didn't anticipate increased costs with a Prop 218 coming through where you can't arbitrarily raise it to fix whatever you want to fix. It takes a vote of the people. It wasn't even funded enough initially to do the work. Why it was balanced budget in the first oh, five, 10 years was the fact that the developer was paying into the district and still maintaining it for a number of years. So therefore, it came in with a pretty good surplus that was applied every single year until it was exhausted. Back five, six years ago, we took the maintenance level way, way down and tried to balance the budget and kind of got the city contributions back to zero. But again, the outcry was, I got trails that are not in good shape, I got fences that are falling apart, we're not watering the little planar areas up in front of the homes. And so we started increasing the budget to try to solve those issues. And again, last year, as we fully, you know, put the budget in for $188,000, which didn't, we can't get collective assessment, so we're in the hole another forty-plus thousand dollars for a grand total now of over eighty. So that's a quick synopsis of where we're at with this particular district. I'm going to call your attention to one line item on this budget while I have it up, which we're going to have a slight little discussion in just a bit. Wait, it is, I don't, my eyesight's bad, and it looks blurry to me. But anyway, there's a line item right in here that has to do with the reserve fund of 2%. That reserve fund was put into that district and has not been funded for years. And it was basically put in there to add a little bit more money to the budget so you can repair stuff that got damaged, like some trail fencing that got damaged, some, a little bit more on some trail that needed it, or some storm drain work. We did not, I have not funded that 2% line item for the last three or four years because you run into a deficit. Why put a reserve in that you can't fund anyway? Okay. Why that is important is that it got brought up in the public meeting, which I'll go over and down with, basically, we talked about in the meeting. This slide here is basically just a recap of what I've just talked about. Of the first line item is, there are 219 parcels in it, $188,000 budget. This past year, we're in the $43,000-plus deficit. Previous was $40,000 of deficit total, bringing us up to the $83,000, almost $84,000 that we talked about. The trail, the next line item is, what would it cost to totally fix all the trail fencing? And this is based on our experience that we had in District Four. So you can see that we need $478,800, my eyesight's correct, to replace all the trail fencing. What we brought to the public in the meeting was a number of different scenarios. And the scenarios basically said, okay, what's it going to cost us to bring the budget, to get rid of the deficit on a yearly basis? In other words, how do we fund $180,000? In other words, how do we fund $188,000? The increase for each individual parcels is gonna be $207,000, or, could be $207,000 plus some change. Unfortunately, at the meeting, I had it $10 less, because while I can divide and seem to get the, the assessment in the right-hand column correctly, I can't seem to subtract the two and get the numbers right. I, you know, I was a math major, but sometimes I screw up. So anyway, it was $207 is what's necessary to bring the budget up to $188,000. What was brought up in the meeting was, okay, we don't necessarily want to go forward and fund, um, the deficit, and maybe we don't want to go forward and fund the trail fencing. What does it cost to put that 2% in, so at least it has a little bit of a cushion in the budget in case a trail fence falls over, we need to repair a couple sections here and there, or something else happens? So the next line item you see here, this one, the $14.85, is that 2% of the construction, the maintenance portion of the budget. It doesn't up the, was not taken at 2% of all the administrative overheads, engineering fees and all that, only against the, the maintenance portion of the budget. So what this does is, if indeed we move forward with this scenario, it'd be $877.70 per parcel. Right currently, the maximum they can assess to them is 800, uh, $655 and a penny. That's what the last year's assessment was. Again, everything I'm gonna tell you this evening, no, there's no CPIs included in here. We don't know, the CPIs vary from year to year. Couple years, they're at one and a half, the last couple of years have been at 3.5 in that vicinity. So that is allowed under the district, so we could always put the CPIs on that number. And going forward, you're gonna always be able to do it. And if we do a ballot measure, I will always include that, that CPIs are part of the ballot measure. And that was scenario number one. That was a simple one. Basically saying, okay, what do we can do? What we had in the audience was basically a support for this. They said, okay, you know, we want to get the trails fixed, that so they're maintained, we want the landscaping maintained, we don't want to take over the landscaping that's in the front of the yards, um, et cetera. So they kind of, sort of bought into that as a viable scenario or an option to move forward with. The next scenario that we presented to them was, it, it took off on scenario number one without the trail fence 2%. Because my feelings and everybody's feelings was that if you're putting money aside to fix the trails fencing, you should have enough to be able to occasionally fix a fence. So I took the 2% again back out. And if we wanted to fully fund the trail fence replacement in, I think, 10 years, because that seems what we've always done for the last 15 years, always tried to base stuff on 10 years. It could be 15, it could be eight, it could be five. But 10 seemed to be what we've traditionally always used. You would add another $217.72 to the, the assessment on a yearly basis, bringing it up to $1,080.57, which is this number right here. Didn't meet with exactly overwhelming success, and, for the people. It's kind of like, that's a lot of money to take and put into the trail fencing, uh, maybe I don't even want the trail fencing, or maybe let's let it go for now, and we'll address it later in another meeting years downstream. So it did meet with a lot of enthusiasm. We then moved to scenario number three. That alarm means I can go home too? Yeah, I guess not. Scenario number three, again, builds on scenario number one. It also then adds scenario number two also to it, which is the total trail fence replacement. And then the, uh, the next thing is, how do we get, we the city get our money back, the $83,000? And what does that do? And again, this was done over another 10-year period, so it's, the 10-year periods are together. And what it did was, to get our money back in 10 years, is it takes another $38.34 for a grand total of $1,118.91. That is that number. That also didn't meet with a whole lot of enthusiasm either. And it was also was, why doesn't the city just eat the $83,000? That is not a decision that we, the staff, can make. That is up to the city council, whether they want to go down that path or not. Again, that was fairly simple scenario. It just, one, two builds on one, three builds on two and one, and you can pick and choose how you want to put it together. The next scenario became the more complex one. This one here is trying to balance the budget. That's what you see on the first slide here. Again, that's basically scenario number one, without the, uh, trail fence reserve, that 2% put in there. And trying to, I had a suggestion of, of someone during this process of, well, why do we not, why do we kick everything up in that first year? Why don't we try to, over a number of different years, and reduce that first impact hit, and every year start building on it and building on it until we reach the point of where we can go ahead and have all the money to pay the city back and, uh, do, replace the trail fencing? And so what I did was, I kind of, I picked, um, a plan that upped at about $51.21, which is basically a five-year plan to eventually hit that maximum number that we wanted to get of the $217. And so why I picked five years? Because I had the option of picking two years, five years, 10 years, whatever it was. I had to start somewhere, so I started with a five-year plan. So then I ran the numbers after the meeting that we had to find out what that did over the, the years. So I came up with this, this chart. As you can see, this next fiscal year, we upped it to 207, just to balance the budget. That's all it accomplishes. The next fiscal year, and all the way to year 25, we, or, excuse me, 24, we add the $51.21. And what I did was, did the accumulation of what, what happens during that time, what the reserve becomes. And in the year 25, we actually have the $83,000 we need in the reserve fund to pay the city back. Now, of course, the city could be taking the money on a yearly basis also, you know, to get the back without putting anything, and that doesn't put anything into reserves for the trail fence replacement. What you see in fiscal year 25 is now a reduction of, or, excuse me, addition of only $12.88 instead of 51. And you can see where I've reduced the fund balance, because we took the $83,000 out. And now we're gonna start all over with a fixed number here of the 2,000, 1,080.57, which appeared in slide number two. That's the same number in there, because now we're at the maximum that we need to start replacing the trail fencing. So again, we start accumulating money on these fiscal years here, until we hit fiscal year 34, at which now I have $507,000 in the reserve, of which I only need $478,000, uh, today's dollars, to build all the fencing out. And so at that point, we go out the contract, or we can be doing small contracts all the way, and build the fencing, and now it's been replaced. Then here, you have the choice of assuming we placed all the fencing here in this particular year, of dropping the assessment, $217, back to what it was to only balance the budget, if that's the course you want to take. There's an infinite amount of scenarios you can use. Okay. There's nothing magical about what I just did. It's just, I had to start somewhere to try to put something down on paper on how to get it and accomplish the goals. The goals being on scenario number one, balance the budget. Scenario number two just happens to be, uh, let's start putting money away from trail fencing. Scenario number three is, we're adding in to get our deficit back. You can do it the other way around also. And then, scenario number, the last one is the most complex in that we're not trying to hit them all, impact all at one time. We're trying to do it over a five-year period and just start increasing, increasing, increasing it, um, and then get our money back. And, you know, 30, year 35, uh, we can do the trail fencing. That some other city engineer is gonna be handling that, because I guarantee I will be 100 years old and retired. Anyway, what discussion now becomes for the council, you can hear the public, is, what do you think we want to do? The complexity, it now becomes even more severe, is the fact that I have to come up with a ballot measure. And what staff is afraid of is that if we come up with a ballot measure that's scenario number five, people may not like it at all, we may not get a majority to even balance the budget. So what we've been talking about staff-wise is coming up with a, uh, two-page, a, a two-ballot system, or, the first one is, let's balance the budget. The second, and if you vote yes on that, and we have a second one that has, this is a, a different increase to replace the trail fencing, replace the deficit. And, you know, vote yes or no on that one too, yes or no on the first one, and see which one wins. If both comes out no, then we're back to you at the public hearings for the, actually, engineers' report saying, you gotta cut something, or you're gonna be going into a deficit spending again, and your 80,000 is now gonna become 120,000. If indeed we go in for the full-blown, you know, let's pay the city back and let's get the trail fencing in place, that next number that we see is, if they vote yes on that, great, if they vote no, we only have a balanced budget. So we have to discuss and figure out where we want to take this thing on the ballot, so we can at least get an approval of, of an increase of some sort to balance something out and hopefully get some of the construction done. So that kind of concludes my, my report here of all over the place, and hopefully everybody kind of understood my ramblings. Chad didn't, he's shaking his head no.
Okay, so we'll, um, take questions from council. So Councilman Newton, do you have questions?
Good report, Dominic.
Thank you.
So in the scenario four, when you start getting out into the fiscal year 23 to 35, do you have a CIP in that?
No, there's no CIPs in here at all. We figure that the CIP, as you go yearly, you know, our fencing costs are gonna go up also.
Correct. So is, is the 1,080, is that the maximum assessment?
Without CIPs.
Okay.
So if indeed you have 20 years of 3% increases, um, it's gonna accumulate, that 1,080 is gonna be a lot higher. But that's the same in all the other four districts also.
Correct. Okay. That's the only question I have right now.
Councilman Bash, do you have any questions of staff? Councilman Hoffman?
And looking at scenario four, you know, when you, having lived in an LMD, when you start throwing these numbers out and you're asking people to throw in an extra $1,000 a year, sets down their property taxes, uh, it hurts. But in LMD Two, in that Western Hills, and, correct me if I'm wrong, their CFD ends in 2033, or 2032?
I, I want to say that I think there's 12 years left on the CFD.
So by the time you're in on your projections, they're gonna be saving themselves around, gee, is it about $10,000? I see they're paying, uh, up there, they're probably paying an additional $5,000 a year in property taxes for, there for the CFD, so that'll be off, probably on there, which would help out for any resale value of those homes. So, but, the one things with LMDs, and especially this one, and, and Dominic, I appreciate all the work in this, I know how much work this is. You strictly went, when your numbers here, to reduce the deficit that's there now, and to get the numbers up to where we can adequately maintain what's there now, correct? There's no replacement fences or anything, just your, just your reserve, correct?
The scenario number four actually replaces the fences by year, fiscal year 35, or 34.
Okay. And this is a discussion I, I've had with the deputy city manager on this thing. This district, and as you well know, and you pointed out, this district was set up differently than the other ones, because the other ones are actually having enough to maintain themselves. But this district has always been short, correct, on their funds?
Yes, sir.
So we've never really actually been able to do, but this district is also like LMD Three, and not like Four, that has more public exposure, correct? To, other than, I mean, right now, LMD Two shares a common road with the city of Corona.
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, so I mean, we're, we're talking, and I'm not trying to, but, you know, this goes back to my discussion is, just so it understands, they're covering all the landscaping and the watering along Hidden Valley and along Norco Hills, correct?
Uh, the trail maintenance, yes.
So not only trail maintenance, but irrigation and?
There, yes, there's a number of slopes that are part of the private properties that, yes, the LMD is maintaining.
They're, they're properties, but they're part of the land, they're, they're entrance way into the city, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was getting at, okay. All right, no further questions.
Councilman Hannah? Do you have any questions? Okay. Cheryl, do we have any cards on this item?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card. Pat Whitaker.
Council, I live in LMD Two, of course, and, um, I would ask that there be greater clarifications for the residents of LMD Two, as to the term that we might consider in a future increase. There's confusion as to whether the increase would be one year to cover a city deficit, or if it's to cover the full term of the bonds. And we've heard a five-year scenario. And so there's a great deal of confusion about how long this increase would actually potentially last. So any ballot measure needs to be very clear, and discussion's very clear as to the term. I would also point out that, living in LMD Two, immediately adjacent to Hidden Valley, we have no sound walls. We don't have some of the benefits of being a public entry into Norco, and yet Hidden Valley is a very, very busy thoroughfare. So there are some impacts, uh, living in the LMD Two district that will never be mitigated. And so I would ask you to be sensitive to that fact as well. Thank you.
Oh, I, I guess, either Dom or I can, I can answer your question. The, there are no bonds involved. This isn't repayment of debt service. It's not like a, the Belarus district, so no bonds. But in terms of how long it goes, it goes as long as there's maintenance to be done, so, which is, there's no sunset clause.
That's all the cards I have.
Okay, so we will bring it back to council for discussion. Councilman Newton?
Trying to look at this as, what's, what's the most fair and reasonable, um, for the residents of LMD Two, but also all the residents of the city? And, and Dominic, in, in one sense that I look at this with, with the deficit, um, I think, I think we, the actions we took last year with LMD Two, and, and we, we had talked about, well, stop watering trees, and then we really didn't want to do that, and, so we're into this $83,000 deficit. And, and I do believe we need to become whole and, and, uh, collect that deficit, that $80,000, because at this point, my perception, and correct me if I'm wrong, all the residents of the city are funding this deficit for LMD Two. In a sense, right? I mean, it's coming out of general I mean, it's coming out of general fund money.
That's correct.
So, like in Councilman Hoffman's case, he, he is paying his fees for LMD four, but there is a very, very slight percentage that he's also contributing to LMD two.
Yes, sir.
And that would be true for any resident in an LMD. And for those of us that are not in an LMD, I'm contributing to that. So, I like the scenario where we become whole, okay? And if I'm understanding this correct, that the smallest increase is going to be the $207, correct?
That becomes whole on an annual basis, doesn't pay back the deficit.
And, but we will pay back the deficit at that in, within five years?
No.
Or never?
Never.
Never.
Okay.
Actually, there isn't, there isn't a scenario which does, I think, what you asked. There's no scenario which balances the budget and pays back.
That is correct. What you'd have to do is take scenario number three. Or take scenario number one and add $38.34 to it, which comes out of scenario number three. That is a 10-year plan to pay back the $83,000. So if you wanted to go forward with a scenario of balance the budget, leave the 2% in to repair fencing, take scenario number one of the $877.40, add to that $34, $38.34.
Makes it 24618.
Well, I'm just going on the, yeah, correct. And I'm adding up the?
Well, let's do this, Dominic.
So, that would do it. But again, let me, let me make a statement that is kind of important, is that if you increase the assessment to pay back the deficit over five years or 10 years, after it's paid back, that's a separate line item, your assessment will still remain high, but you can levy less because you don't have to pay back the money.
Right.
That's very similar to what we're doing District Four, where it's way over 1,000, but we're only assessing 700 and some dollars because we don't need the rest of the money to balance the budget.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of a different way of answering her question, also a different answer, in that once, once the, at least that portion, once the city is repaid, that it theoretically drop off, so it's five years or 10 years.
Okay, so the challenge is for you to present that on a ballot in a clear and concise manner. Now, can that be done?
We had that discussion today, and it was kind of like, yes, I'm going to prepare it, the ballot, John and everybody is going to look at it, they're going to give to somebody who knows absolutely nothing about assessment districts and say, do you understand this?
Okay, I mean, I do not support the city forgiving the deficit, forgiving the debt, okay? I think that should be repaid. And so, like I said, I'd like to see us get whole, all right? I'd like to see the district be able to maintain itself. Now, the trail fencing and going out all the way to 2035, the existing fencing isn't going to last that long. I just, I don't know how to get there on the trail fencing portion, because I think that amount is much too great. I mean, it is a very important component in, in the city, our trails and open space. But I look at the financial burden on that, so, I mean, if there could be a reduction and set aside for trail fencing, but I don't think you, you're going to have to do it bits and pieces on the replacement. I don't think you can do an LMD four where you're going to go out and, you know, replace thousands of feet at one time.
Well, if you notice, when you're reviewing the balance, the fund balance here, you certainly, you have 221,000 at that line right there, which in year 28, 28, you certainly can do a major project that buys half, that buys half of it. If you want to do it a couple of years earlier, you can buy 25% of all the fencing get replaced. Bottom line is though, somebody or 25% of it is not going to get replaced. So, that year there.
Maybe we should project it out 12 years, because in 12 years, with the Green New Deal, we'll be back to wood and not vinyl.
Sorry, I won't be driving cars.
So, I'll wait for everybody else's comments. I think you have the gist of where I want to be.
Councilman Bash?
I guess because I was here when all of this went down, and we argued against these fees, for those of you that don't know, what happened is, is that in '64, we prohibitively zoned our hills in such a way that you could never build in them. They were five and 10-acre parcels. What happened was in this room, we were, sold a bill of goods that, oh, it's okay, the people in the hills, they'll just pay for everything. And that was on the heels of people in the flatlands. The great myth is they didn't pay anything. Well, they paid a lot. They've had sewer, sewer fees and all kinds of things to, to put in the complete infrastructure. So a lot of people were just coming off that when this all went down. And they went ahead and rezoned it to half-acre parcels, which meant they could break the granite and build houses. And I can remember having a conversation with Brian Petrie and saying, well, what happens when the funds run out? Because they all run out. And we knew it then. And I'd stand there and argue with council. So here I sit, I don't think ethically we can let the debt, we can't, because it's taxpayer So it has to be repaid in some form or fashion, because it's taxpayer money. It's not my money to say, okay, I forgive the loan. But I also don't want to have that neighborhood turn into a, you know, a substandard development. It's a beautiful development. I love that development, it's very nice. I'm also cognizant of what Councilman Hoffman said, they do get some of the impacts, but on the other hand, they knew that when they bought those properties. I guess for me, somehow, some way, we need to present as best we can, these different scenarios and have people vote. The problem we have is nobody shows up.
Well, since they don't show up, this is ballot.
No, but I meant, my point is, is what we need to do is get them, get the information to people in such a way that it's not emotional, that they understand that these are the scenarios. I'm not in favor of the one that doesn't repay the loan. I am a little bit concerned. I initially thought scenario four would be a good way to go, because it's, it pays it off, it creates a bit of a fund. 10 years is going to go fast. And also, I was thinking exactly what Ted Hoffman was thinking, the CFD is going to be, it's going to go down. So you have two which will pay down, just so I'm clear. You have one which basically just kind of keeps you where you need to be at the moment. But two, will fund Equestrian Trail over 10 years. That's an increase of $425.56 per year. The number three is $463.90. That repays the money they owe us, plus fencing, correct? And four, is an increase of 207.84, and over a period of 15 years, makes them whole in terms of repaying the money and gives them some money to repair fences except for 25%. Did I miss something there? Or around 30?
At the end of 15?
At the end of 15, 35.
At the, at the, in the 15 years, we've been paid back whole and all the fencing's got replaced.
Right. I mean, that seems to be, and then each year, 2020, they paid 207, $207.04, which makes it 862.85 per year. And then '21, that jumps to 51, 21, to 914, that jumps another 51, 51, 51. So by fiscal year '25, they'll be up to $1,080.57. Do you happen to, do you know the date when the CFD will end? Okay, so that's, that doesn't really help anybody. I guess for me, I guess two, three, and four, if we can, if we can put that before the people that are up there and just make them understand that, I don't know, can we do that? Or they have three choices to choose?
Sure. And I think that we could approach it as a waterfall essentially, starting from, you know, question number one is kind of the base minimum that the council thinks is appropriate, and then waterfalling it down. The one thing that we haven't really discussed, that you don't make, can't make a final decision on tonight, but that's what happens if none of these pass.
Well, maybe cross that bridge.
Because that's really going to be the issue. If, I don't want this to come out wrong, but if the council is committed to continuing to make up the difference, then none of these are going to pass because there's no incentive to do it. On the other hand, if the, if the incentive is, we're not going to maintain anything anymore, which is terrible for the city, and terrible for the council, and terrible for their residents, that is an incentive to vote for some increase. It's a really difficult decision, and it's through all street lighting and landscape.
Well, for myself, I'm going to be reluctant to continue funding this. And I'm really sorry, because I really fought against what you guys are saddled with. And I, I mean, maybe we can work something out, but that would be my position. One of these has to pass, two, three, or four, in order to make us whole in terms of this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Hoffman?
Okay, and I'm not for getting rid of the deficit. I, I think we need to take care of that. This was scary when we did it before. And the reason I talk about the streets, and them sharing Norco Hills Road and, and Hidden Valley, is because, and I've had this discussion with the deputy city manager, is it may be we as a city, and this is a way to, to look at this as, we may have to share some of this expense. And yes, we approved, our councils before this, approved of this division, they approved of this LMD. But if you look at the fencing on the trail that runs along Hidden Valley and then Norco Hills, and the roadways, we use that as residents. I know LMD four residents, we use, that's our back way into, into Riverside to Corona. The cut-through traffic, go through LMD four up to, through the hall to LMD three, past the golf course, boom, it goes in there. So we as Norco, and this goes back to Councilman Newton's statement, yes, all of us are paying for this little bit of deficit of the city, but we're also, there's other city people that use those roadways and drive through that area. And that is why I look at it as those two areas, I'm talking about the, the green spaces there, and the parkways, and the roadways there, that reflects upon a city as a whole. It's appearance. It's what we show to people that are living in Corona, living in Riverside, people that come and visit. And we can, we're asking the residents of LMD two, and LMD three especially, LMD two especially, I'm sorry, to maintain something for the whole benefit of the city. And that's where I was coming from, as far as those streets along Hidden Valley and, and Norco Hills Drive. When you drive through there, it's an appearance factor. It shows you how we take care of our city. And if you look at that fence today, it's about gone, the wooden, the wooden fence. And that's why I brought that up, is if we can eliminate that portion of it, because I'm looking at the numbers, and they're only paying 655 right now, and you want this thing to pass, and you start shoving them back up to 1,100? I'd say no to, to shock factor. It's the same thing we had when we had, the thing we discussed, manure, everybody wanted to do it right away, you couldn't. You had to do it in graduated steps. Like scenario four, because it's gradual. It takes longer for us to get it back, but we get everything back. And it will take a little longer to get it done, and we will, and, but at the same time, I think we as a city, and I think we have, have brought this back, I don't know when we need to get it up to the residents, is that if we could have something that would tell us, what would us, as a city, cost us to replace that and to maintain the cost of that fencing along the outside of the LMD two? What does that cost us to replace that, to maintain that? And that is a city function.
Councilmember, one of the things that has to happen from the discussion, and I, as we narrow down the scenarios, is that needs to come back to you anyway, so, because we know, we need to make sure we solidify what's going to be put on the ballot. And so we'll have to work on that part. What you're asking for, we can bring back what that actual number is in regards to Hidden Valley, Norco Hills Road, in regards to what that trail fence, actual linear footage would be for, based on the numbers we did, what would that cost? We can break that out, and I can break out the, any other parts of that cost associated to those areas, and we can bring that information back to you.
And under, and under the 72 Act, if you wanted to do that, it would be treated as a contribution by the city.
Okay, so that would, but you could include the cost of knowing the fencing, the trail maintenance, and the landscaping along that area. Just, just give us an idea, what, if we had to take that area to curb, to give these folks an opportunity to catch up? I mean, and this is, it's a long-term, to me, it's a long-term benefit to the city.
Yeah, we can break it down by slope, irrigated slope, trail, and also parkway and trail fence.
Because if you remember, and I don't, how long it's been, but that waterfall used to be there by CVS, and they shut that water off years ago, because it's too expensive to operate. But that's where I'm at, as far as, before I would say, what are we going to do, and for this, to see where we're at? And as far as trying to give multiple, to, like Councilman Bash's, if you give these too many, you're never going to get any of them approved. You've got to let the people just look at one, or none? Because you, I know, I just...
Basically, what you're saying is that the Hidden Valley parkway area, and all the LMD stuff, or the, the foliage, the drain, I mean, the, sorry, the irrigation, all that kind of stuff, we would take that on, and how would we do that? What's the mechanism to do that? I actually don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, the, the city would treat it as a contribution out of the general fund to the district.
I mean, if we could get those numbers, I, I think that's pretty, that's a pretty interesting idea.
I think it would not be the sticker shock that they're going to get. Just to see where we're at, just so that?
I like that idea.
We can get them approved. And, and I know that, yeah, the LMDs were created, and they're supposed to fund this stuff, but it, I mean, you're going to ask them to pay for a lot of things that should have been done years ago, but should have, would have, could have, but now let's see what we can to make it reasonable. That's just my point.
I cannot?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question or comment to that? So, Remington Estates is LMD one?
That's correct.
Okay. And did we not, here a few months ago, or a little longer, had, have a discussion about spending about $80,000 on landscaping and the entry at Cory Dawn and River?
That's correct.
And would that not have been an assessment to LMD one?
No, that would have been a contribution for improvement.
All of, all of that?
Yes. Now, in saying that, part of the discussion going into next fiscal year during the assessment process, LMD number one?
process, LMD number one will be having a conversation of a two-eighteen hearing as well.
Okay, so, I'm just throwing that out there, that whatever you propose for LMD two, you're gonna have to be fair to LMD one, and then that's gonna be, and, and so, say you go this way, and you wanna absorb all the costs for LMD two, now you're gonna be on the hook now to do the same thing for LMD one.
We have not had our spring meeting with LMD one, which will be coming up. That will be part of the discussions related to that, because in our last meeting, it was very clear that your assessment's going to have to go up, and any increase or improvements will require that assessment to go up, going into the net following year, because of what, what was being looked at. They're gonna have to pick that cost up, otherwise we can't do the improvement.
And then maybe you can make, maybe make a nexus for all the LMDs, as a public purpose.
I, and the reason I brought that up is because LMD one, which, you're, you're right, LMD two and LMD three all have access, they're all, uh, fronting not only the city, Norco on one side, but they've got the city of Corona on the other side, and they front major high, or roadways that are entrance ways in the city. LMD four does not, and neither does LMD five. They're inside the city, they're not. That's the reason I bring those three up, so, and I forgot about any one, so, yeah.
So I have one more question. So the money that's owed to us at this point, can we just look at what the retroactive cost would've been had we been main, had we taken that contribution? So in other words, we go back to when the eighty-three thousand, can you go retroactively to maybe take on, or forgive, or give back, whatever it's called, the technology, to forgive a portion of that debt? Can you do that?
Yeah, I think you're better off, from an engineering and accounting point of view, of if the city's gonna get repaid, get repaid. If it turned out that the city's contribution was equal to the amount of the repayment, it'd still be reflected as a repayment and a contribution that offset one another, rather than just simply forgiving the contribution.
All right, well, I just, you know, I wanna be, I really do wanna be fair to you, and so we have to figure out a way, though, that it is taxpayer money, but I'm very interested in what Ted's saying, and in terms of that road, so, thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Hannah?
Thank you. I agree, I think, uh, what Councilman Hoffman says is a pretty good idea, 'cause it eases the, uh, shock of the increase on, on this, but, uh, question, Dominic, this assessment necessary to fund the equestrian trail fencing, four seventy-six, eight hundred over ten years, will that, will that trail fence be put in all at once, and they pay, pay over, over ten years, or would you just do it in increments of?
Not necessarily. Two hundred thousand dollars, if you accumulate that much, is a great, great-sized project to put in. We'll have other city projects and other stuff to, to, um, piggyback with, so you don't have to do it all at the end of ten years. You can start doing it in increments every, you know, four or five years.
Okay, and would it, would it be the, uh, replacement with wooden fence, or go back to, go to the?
Standard is vinyl now.
The new white fence?
The new whites, vinyl fence is the standard.
Okay, all right, and, uh, let's see, what, what was the deficit that, that they owe, owed it, the total deficit?
Total deficit, yeah, total estimated deficit at the end of this fiscal year will be eighty-three thousand and some change.
Eighty-three, okay, all right. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Brian, I think this question's gonna be for you. We can develop a ballot and send it out, but what are we gonna do about public education and working with the residents to increase understanding?
Well, what we could do is, based on what we're hearing tonight, is we could reformat the scenarios, and we could have another meeting with the residents. This needs to come back to you anyway.
Right.
And then we would at least have more feedback from them to bring back to you at that next meeting. And I would think that probably, that'd probably be the process, to try to educate them and understand. Again, it's getting them to be here and contribute in that type of thing, but that's about the best way I, I see is us trying to do, is have another meeting, and those who show up, we can continue to educate them, and the residents who are engaged, which some of them have been in our meetings here or here tonight, uh, they can help in that process as well.
I guess, uh, for me, obviously, the ballot's gonna go to every single resident, and if you have nine, or ten, or however many people attending the meetings, I don't see how that, that's going to help, um, increase the understanding of what these fees are and why they're assessed, and what they're going for, and so I think we're gonna need to really look at not just this LMD, but LMD across the board. How do we engage with our residents? Because face-to-face meetings aren't working, and so what other outreach, or how can we increase the engagement of our residents in these LMDs to have a positive outcome for the residents and for the city?
Well, we've had some positives, I maybe, actually sending literature out that maybe explains it, that's one way. Uh, we, we did a couple of videos that were pretty successful with, uh, information being presented, that's always, that's another option that we can look at doing. It still, it still comes down to trying to get them to engage, and, and even some of the residents here, you know, they actually worked on trying to get their neighbors out there, or educate them, and I give them, um, kudos for that. We can continue to doing that process, and then I received some calls, um, and so that's probably the, it still comes down to them wanting to be involved, or they don't feel that this is that big of a deal, or matters to them that much, so, um, but all those options are available to us to try.
Okay, I just think we need to look at more of a multi-pronged approach to doing that, and I guess my other question be, maybe for Cheryl, so the number of ballots go out, is it a majority of the ballots returned for the vote? Or a majority of the?
Majority of the ballots returned.
Majority of ballots returned, okay.
Brian, one of the things we can do, which we did the last time, is to have a community outreach at the park. Right, by the LMD, and the last time we did?
That was our best turnout ever.
On out, so we could repeat that.
Okay.
Mayor, just...
Yes?
When does this have to be back to council for, I mean, so you have time for?
Well, the reason we started this process early is because normally we would be conducting our spring meetings in April, May, um, so we do have some time to work on it, and Dominic, you can, there's a, I think, we need to get this decided from the ballot process, because by June, uh, you, we have to have a public hearing somewhere in there around June, and then in July, it has to then be, go through that process, because it needs to go to the county tax rolls. I think the deadline is July's, about the second week of July.
It has to be county tax rolls in August, August tenth or twelfth, in that, that, that week, ideally on this two-eighteen-type ballot where you have voting. I'd like it to be done by beginning of June, um, mid-June at the very latest, because if indeed it goes south, I have to redo the engineer's report, and I think last time when we had the two-eighteen that failed on this particular district, I had both reports, and I was running them simultaneously, so we didn't lose a whole lot of time. Second meeting in July is the absolute end of the time that we have to have a decision made, um, so I can get my guys typing up to get the stuff to the dis, the, um, county session's office.
Okay, so with that being said, what's the pleasure of the council? It sounds like we want the debt paid back, or that's my impression from everyone, over some period of time. What else? Is there a specific scenario that anyone favors, or one?
Well, I, you know, like I'd mentioned, I mean, it, it should be clear and concise, but Kevin just showed me one thing that may make it a little easier, and that is break it down monthly, also.
Thirty-nine dollars a month. That's the sticker shock. Thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
Except when you get, it's gonna be on your mortgage, 'cause it goes to your taxes.
No, I get it, but I meant...
Right, I mean...
That is the most expensive scenario.
Yeah, if you went, yeah, if you went the most, so I think if you broke it down into the smaller increments, that may make it a little more clear.
So you're, ultimately, you're gonna have to adopt an annual assessment, but in terms of providing information to the residents?
Yeah, it's just a matter of adding another column, it's...
With that said, Ted made a very good point, you know, just from a history point of view, the way we got sewers in the town of Norco, the assessment was eighty dollars when people were making eighty dollars a week. Norco had to be condemned, because nobody would vote for sewers, they would just pump it into the street, so this is the true Norco tradition, you know what? We're, we're very independent, so you gotta hand it to everybody that lives here in terms of that.
Any other input on this end?
Just, so we just come back with a clarification, and what I'm, bring, bring the assessment whole, repay the debt, and I'm hearing to do that over a five-year period, or is what I'm getting from the council, is, that's, that's what I need to understand. The other issue that was discussed was the two percent that would be part of that maintenance that we would need to add to this, and then what we would bring back to the council for additional consideration is what the, 'cause this all needs to come back to you anyway, to make sure we got it right, and then we would also, uh, the other part of that would be, is to bring back what those numbers look like on Hidden Valley and Norco Hills.
Right.
And then, uh, the only thing I'm not sure of, do I, once I kinda solidify this before I, do I go wait till I come back to you, then go meet with the public, or do I meet with the public before I come back to you with these scenarios? Because, um, if not, that, I need to push this, you know, we won't be back in two weeks, it'll be longer than that, by the time I get notices out to the public to meet, and providing the weather is good to have a meeting in the park, 'cause I think Andy's suggestion is a really good one, and we had probably excellent, I think, turnout in that one. But that would be probably, probably break this down, and then my suggestion would be to meet with them, then bring back their comments to you with these scenarios, and who knows, maybe something comes back from the public that way as well.
Although, the flip side of that would be for, to be able to tell the residents, here are two alternatives the council is willing to accept, and here's what our contribution is, then provide comments on that, rather than...
Absolutely, that, that might be better to do it that way, and let them then?
Otherwise, we're all over the screen again.
So your, your intention is to bring it back to us before you take it to the resident, which is?
Actually, John's suggestion's a good one, and then we would look at those numbers, because that may change how you...
It may, yes, and I...
Just the scenario. And we can bring back this, this is the way the council's going, and do you have any other feedback?
Yeah, let's not confuse the issue too much.
What I'll do is, on those different scenarios that we develop, I'll have two scenario ones. One is we drop out the, the major arterial, the trails and the slope and all that type of stuff on that, so you'll see what it is with it in there, see what it is without. And I can tell you, I've already estimated, it's about thirty percent of the trail fencing is in those two streets, and thirty percent of the trail maintenance is on those two streets. And I think Chad just ran it through his little thing and verified my number. No, I, that, I, I don't have that slope, I don't have that square footage.
Which, which comes out to approximately two hundred dollars a month, I mean, two hundred dollars annually.
Okay, is there any other discussion from council? Staff, do you have enough direction from your council?
I think so.
Okay, very good. Then we will move on to item five C, three-way stop sign at Dale's Drive and Pacer Drive. Chad?
Thank you, Mayor. This item was reviewed by staff, a request of a resident who was seeking a three-way stop sign at Dale's Drive and Pacer Drive. Matt, do you have that? So here's the general location, um, Pacer is north to south, and Dale's is east to west on there. You can zoom out a little bit, Matt. There's existing stop sign on Pacer, uh, you can see area here, um, you've got Park Ridge, there's a Jason Street that's on the, the west over there, and if you follow Dale's across, you have a couple other cross streets that go across Dale's before it ends, um, so there's been requests for that particular location. I asked RKA to look at that area, determine if it meets the warrants for justification for a three-way stop, and Dominic's gonna review those findings.
I knew if I sat up here longer, I'd get stuck with this report too. We did not do a full warrant, um, study on this thing, of which we sent out traffic counters, request all the traffic accidents, and all the other neat stuff that goes with it, because it becomes a very involved process, an expensive process. What my in-house traffic engineer did, he took a look at the number of homes that were in the area, and estimated what the volume of traffic would be, um, at that intersection. The, we use the MUTCA, which is a California-developed warrant, it's traffic information, it has all the signs in there, what you need to do, the counts that you need to have to justify traffic signals, stop conditions, um, signage, and all the other neat stuff that goes with it. That is the bible that we use to study these type of intersections. They set out the volumes that you need, and for an intersection like this, to put up a three-way stopping, you need about four thousand cars in an eight-hour period. We have nowhere near that. We need cross-traffic of two hundred on the minor street and three hundred on the major street. We don't have that either. We probably, our guess, on the peak hour, have about a hundred cars maximum of that, that's coming off of those streets, 'cause there's about seventy homes that'll prob, that potentially would use Pacer. The site distance is good, there's no, um, inclines in there, it's pretty flat streets, so there's no visibility issues, there's no equestrian trails in there that could, could cause a problem, 'cause in the vehicle code, we're allowed to do different things because of the, for the city of Norco, because of equestrian uses. We couldn't find anything, any traffic accident history, anything that would lead us to say it meets the warrant, but it's established by the state of California. And so that's why our recommendation basically says, don't put it in there. Do you still have the prerogative to go ahead and put stop signs in there without meeting warrants? Yes, you do. Just caution you, there might be some liability issues if they're installed without meeting warrants. Warrants gets you off the hook, unless we install it incorrectly. It says you went through the study, it has the traffic volumes, and you can go ahead and put something in.
And without them, if there's an accident, uh, they look to the city, because the city installed an unsafe, non-compliant traffic control device?
Okay. That basically concludes it, and so again, our recommendation, from the engineering standpoint, is it's not there. You also have the issue too, that if you install something that doesn't meet the warrant, well, Western is the first street to the east of here, which probably has more cars on it than does Pacer. Just looking at it, it's, there's more streets coming into it that might be using it, and it now will snowball into that whole area that you, okay, they got stop signs, I want stop signs. Caution you on putting something in that is not warranted.
Okay. Councilman Hannah, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, I'm familiar with that area over there pretty good, but I would, myself, I'd just have to go along with the engineer's, uh, recommendation.
Councilman Hoffman?
All right, you already answered my one question about the liability, uh, what about court enforcement? If they cite, you don't think it's gonna hold up either, huh?
I don't, well, one of the big issues is that with unwarranted stop signs, people run them.
Oh, right.
They're gonna run them. I think you can still cite.
Yeah, if, if they blow the stop sign, you can still cite them.
But if somebody argued, but if it was argued in court?
Yeah, that's, that's not a defense.
Okay, just...
It's like if we misstated a speed limit, uh, and it wasn't warranted, too slow, we still get, they still get cited.
And I'm just trying to remember, the following, if you traveled, uh, north on that corner, all the way up there, is there, is there a three or four-way, a four-way up there, on the next one over?
I mean, here?
It's just a two-way, right? Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Bash? Councilman Bash?
Since I was the one that brought this forward, it was brought to me by a group of residents, which I'm, I guess they didn't know this was happening tonight. The problem is when you come down that street to the right, the way that knuckle goes sort of curves, you go down, you really cannot see cars coming on you. And I, because that's a cut-through area, I would say that that's, I would say 200 to 300 cars is probably a low estimate. I sat there one day to see what it was like to get out, because that's a complaint, people can't get out. There are cars going in excess, they're going fast. I'm not very good at judging that. I understand the warranted issue. We had that at Willow and what was it, Valley View? And that was one where the traffic study came back and said, yeah, it's totally visible. And there's actually a point, there's actually a point where if you're sitting there, there's a hill, and you cannot see a car coming up over that hill. I contend that it's a very similar situation here, not a hill, but at that curve, just cars coming so fast. Quite honestly, I wonder sometimes if the whole warranting issue is just simply a way for the state of California not to be responsible when they know full well the stop sign should go where a stop sign should go. So I'm in favor of this three-way. Now, why would it cost $4,000?
Because you, it's the signage you have to purchase, the striping you have to lay down on the road, stop legends, the stop ahead indication, because again, as you indicated, if they're coming around the corner speeding, you want them to know there's a stop ahead. So it's just staff time also included in that.
Okay, well, anyway, I am in, I am in support of this. I understand the liability we're taking on, but just leave it at that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you show me where the horse trail is at this intersection? I can't tell if that's backyard or... Nothing on the south side. All right. Thank you for that. So as Councilmember Bash brought up, we had the same situation at Willow and Valley View, and it wasn't warranted, but it was a request of the neighbors. And I think it's made a big difference for that neighborhood and cars speeding down there. We also had the same situation at Fourth and Corona years ago, where there wasn't a stop sign. And since the horse trail on Fourth went from the south side to the north side at that intersection, those signs have been there now for quite a long time. There's not very many accidents that I can recall, and it does seem that the majority of people do stop there. Just got to slow down the cut-through traffic. So I'm, I agree with Councilmember Bash, and I certainly support this. And I think your costs are somewhat reasonable. But I think you can beat that number, Chad.
So I was over there this weekend with my son, because he does chores for somebody over there. And I think the issue for the stop sign really is about slowing down the traffic that's coming from Park Ridge and going on to Dale's Drive there.
I have to figure out the water.
And then I go back to, well, are those people going to stop at that stop sign? Are they going to blow the stop sign anyways? So I think it has the potential to slow that traffic down, because since I've been on council, we have had two or three times where the residents in that area have come in, particularly on the, on the turn from Park Ridge to Dale's, to speak of their traffic concerns in that particular area. So I guess my only concern would be the liability that we could potentially take on from putting a sign that was unwarranted, so...
Madam Mayor, I think my only concern regarding the request is, again, is it's going to snowball other requests that are going to have similar, again, I candidly don't think this meets the warrants on its face. Visual impairments or not, Valley View and Willow certainly is a clear area where, again, it's on a hill, there's a need to stop people because of the action there. I mean, that's, that's a compelling reason. There's not one here. You have another intersection just down the street and another intersection.
Right.
And there's going to be that request of, why not there? Because again, it's slow them down. It's really create an obstacle course. And then you're going to get the opposite issue of what you expressed is people just running it. Then the complaints of they're running it, there's no enforcement, now we're having the, the law enforcement out there to babysit it, and they can't be there all day long, you know?
Right.
So it's not, I want to make sure that people understand, this is not a lack of concern by us, it's just more of, we have denied a lot of requests that are frankly more stronger than this as far as need. And we just want to make sure that we're being fair and adequate as those requests come in, and we're reviewing them internally. A lot of them don't get to this level, how the council wants us to review those at that, you know, because I want to be consistent.
Right.
And that's my concern, it's just being fair. You know, I don't know of any way of not putting the stop signs in and putting something else other than, you know, slow down signs, you know? Again, people don't pay attention to the signs, honestly. We can stripe in the street, slow down, you know?
So that's going to lead me to two questions. And the first one, the stop signs that were installed on Hillside at Second, were those warranted?
We had a sight distance issue over there.
Right.
So those were warranted?
Sight distance.
Okay, so then my next question would be the striping and the directional signs that you recently put on Valley View between Willow and Third. What has been the feedback from the residents? Because you just did striping over there, correct?
We did striping and added the, the signage on the side for arrows both directions, so they're visible going either north or south, that they see that there's a turn there.
And what's the feedback been on that?
Other than the resident there, I haven't gotten really any feedback that it was good or negative. Like I said, we just, one of the requirements is that we want to make sure we got it done at the council's request, so we've done that. And we hope it's improved. The overall visibility of there's a turn here, slow down, and that was the whole purpose. So we put a lot of signs in there, you know, painted the street, so hopefully it's had an impact. I have not got any direct feedback other than the resident saying thank you for putting it in.
Okay, well, and I know I drove through there at night, and when I drove through, I was like, oh, they got it done. And it visually does create an impact. Is there something that could be done similar at that corner of Park Ridge and Dale's instead of doing the stop sign that why bring up the concerns? Is there some additional striping or something we could do at that turn? I think part of it is the width, and then also people parking on the street in that area in a combination with speed. So, because I really do think the stop sign issue is more going back to the speed at which people are taking the previous corner.
Yeah, I mean, again, signage-wise...
They're going to complain that it's in their yard, I'm sure.
Again, it's not, it's not a visual thing for the people that are speeding, they're just speeding down the road.
Right.
It's a visual potentially for when you're coming out of Pacer and you're creeping out, and your responsibility to enter safely into the intersection to make either turn, a left or a right, is how effectively you can see those cars after they've made that turn and coming around that edge. Because again, remember, those cars are coming around at whatever speed they're coming around, they're not going to stop until they already come around the corner. And at that speed, they're not preparing to stop, especially if they're cut-throughers don't know. So it's just trying to balance, since they're not seeing it at a distance, knowing they're going to have to slow down, they're coming around the corner going whoops, and creaching on their brakes to slow down. It doesn't impede people coming out, making a right-hand turn, it's strictly making the left. There appears to be enough distance though to reasonably see whether it's safe to enter into the intersection. But again, it's a, it's an opinion thing at this point, since it's, it's not a, the numbers don't warrant it, it's really just opinion whether you want to do something or not. I'm more than concerned of, is this going to create a bigger snowball for me? And in telling folks why, I can't give you one, why do you give to this group? And it really takes an advocate to get it to this point. Because generally, we know when we look at it, it doesn't meet the warrants, so we're not going to spend the staff time or consultant time reviewing something in the end that is going to be our recommendation to deny. So a lot of them don't get to this point, but we've denied a lot.
Any other...
So what's the difference if you don't have enough police officers to stop the speeding, or you don't have enough officers to stop the stop sign? See the horse trailer there? I have actually been there when there was a, there was a residence right there, and you'll have a horse trailer right at that curve. And you literally, you cannot see a car coming around that curve. In fact, I would argue, when you're sitting where that white line is, you can't see, even right there, you cannot see a car speeding around that corner. I mean, look where your white line is. I mean, one of the things I've requested many times is can we move the white lines out? And I've been told, no, we cannot do that. So, and also, and no offense, Chad, really, no offense at all, the argument you're making was exactly the argument made against putting the stop sign at Willow. Oh, no, you can see totally fine. I mean, Lori sat right there in that chair. And I'm sorry, but you cannot see a car coming around that corner, and they're going fast. And of course, they're going to blow stop signs, but heck, they'll blow stop signs right down the street from me all the time. People don't even make an attempt to stop, they just go right through it. So you're right, I am advocating for this, and I totally understand it may or may not be warranted, but I think there's a flaw in the warranting system. But maybe striping will do it. Maybe you move that stripe forward, I don't exactly know. But I know people have a lot of trouble getting out of there, especially at night, so...
Keep in mind, the stop legend is simply to get them to stop, and then they creep forward. We don't want them stopping at the intersection, and then they make their stay going too far, then they're in the intersection. So it's simply a safety issue to stop them before the intersection, then you creep forward. That's why it is as far back, it's not meant to make a turn from there and go. It's really said, okay, now you creep intersection and then safely move through.
At this location, basically, this is your horse trail. It's in line with the end of the horse trail.
Yeah, I get it, but you notice it, but it just makes it hard is all. So, anyway, I've said my piece, I'm...
One of the things in this street is like many of the newer developments, and this one more so, you have a lack of vegetation on both sides. And so what we've created in this development is a place for people to travel more than 25 miles an hour. Because if you look at, and the, let's take it as a traffic calming measure, there are none there, because there's no physical restrictions to show, tell you to slow down, there's nothing. There, I mean, this is even visually, you have a straight shot. So just, and you get this in the mindset of people, of why you put in traffic calming measures is to slow them down. There's no trees there that restrict your vision, you won't slow down. You're going to do 35, 40 through there, you don't even think about 25, because visually, you're going to go straight. And that's just human nature. That's the problem we had on North until we fixed it. And this is, you're not going to solve the problem, because they're going to run the stop sign on downs, they're going to keep going. They're, you know, unless we, you know, and Andy's people are just going to have to, they could take a trip up there and cite a few people, because they're going to run the stop sign. But until they start getting the fact that this is 25, and, and Chad, how many 25 mile an hours signs up in there? Do you know?
I don't have a count, no.
You know, that might be something to think of before we throw a stop sign in there, is to put a, a stop sign in there that says 25, at least remind people that that's what it is. But looking at that as a, it's not, there's none up there. And you look at that, and you're going to look visually, and you're going to drive visually, hey, I'm open, I'm going to drive, I'm going to drive through there at 35, 40 miles an hour, don't think anything of it. Because there's no restrictive, you have the visual restriction you need to slow you down. And so the people on Pacer are, I mean, I'm sorry, but I just don't see a need to have another stop sign. We had that problem on the other side on Alahamro, they wanted all those stop signs over there, and that was the thing that came up, is you put them up, and the more you put up, the more they ignore them. And that's what happens.
The other issue that Dominic and I were just talking about is that this is a half-moon driveway for that residence right there. So they're, one of their driveway entrances are right where the stop legend and the stop bar would be, which again, poses an issue for that residence as far as getting in and out of the property potentially. Again, if it's, if it's that busy, that could be an issue. But again, I, we'd have to look at that as far as where it would be placed, but it's going to be right in that area as far as where that stop legend would likely be at that intersection. So that may impact that one resident that has that half-moon driveway approach.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Mostly approved.
Is there, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve a stop sign? Yeah, the three-way stop at Dale's and Pacer Drive. Please vote on this item. The motion fails with Councilmember Hoffman, Mayor Gronmire, and Mayor Portemhanna voting All right, so we will move on to item number six, City Council, City Manager, and Staff Communications. We will start with our city manager.
I don't have anything for the Department of Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Hoffman?
Yeah, I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. For those of you that got your mail from the League, League of Cities, if you looked in there, the League urges cities to comment by March 4th on the new organic waste diversion regulations, and I hope you all got to see that. The proposed regulations, and I think Chad alluded to this earlier, make significant changes to recycling requirement for local governments that will have to implement. And changes include requiring organic waste collection services, new infrastructure capacity and planning, edible food recovery, additional reporting requirements, compliance and reporting beginning in 2022, and the new procurement requirements. Unfortunately, we have to pick up all these costs, and the League is asking, the League of Cities is asking the cities to reply or asking comments by, by March 4th. And I'm, I guess what I'm doing is I'm asking for us, and I don't, which agendas this, but I'm asking that we don't have time to have it in the council meeting, but if we can get Andy or the city manager to, to reply to it at the cost of what this is going to be. I mean, this is something that Chad can probably allude to, too. This is, we'll have no mechanism, once this thing gets into place, and it will cost us cities to do what the state requires us to do. So I guess I'm asking consensus of all my council members to send us, to give us the city manager, they can provide, prepare a response or...
Opposition letter.
Opposition letter, will be good?
Is that agreeable to everyone? Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Hannah?
Yeah, this coming Friday morning, Councilman Hoffman and I are going to go to Banning to the League's Riverside County Division Training. It's going to be a four-hour seminar. It'll have some discussion there from RCTC, RTA, and Sunline Transit Company, and then it'll have just a discussion about the overview of the League of Cities and Riverside Division and stuff like that. And we'll see what it's all about and report back to you the next council meeting.
Thank you very much. Lieutenant Dana Bryan?
Just a quick update. Basin Park Arena, Pacer Park Arena, Hawks Crest Park Arena, those arenas are all closed. Just oversaturation until we get better drainage, depending on how this storm affects us, but the rest of the arenas are open. Trails up in the hill and LMDs, our priority is to make sure that all driveways are available. So they worked over the weekend, and we're slowly getting those trails back up. Hopefully, this next storm will not be as, as bad, but we are working around both Parks Division and Public Works to try and get things operational for us. Access to the San Ana River... Access to the Santa Ana River, signs are posted, that will remain in effect of activity until these storm series are over, and we have some subsidy due to debris flows and fast-moving water.
Thank you. Steve? Chad?
Yes, I just want to give council an update. The next agenda, next council meeting, there'll be three contracts we're going to ask you to approve for paving projects, so it's eight streets that we're going to bring forward to get approved as a part of the budget. So we're going to get those awarded and done and finished by June, so that'll complete most of our really approved street projects you asked us to complete. So I appreciate that, thank you. It's going to be Mountain, Pacific, Paddock, Hidden Valley, Cedar Creek, Sutton, Corona, which is 5 to 6, and Western, between Park Ridge and Second.
Matt? Cheryl?
Recruitment for Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee is ongoing, and so residents that are interested in applying can do so by getting information on the city's website, or by visiting or calling the city clerk's office. Recruitment ends March 25th. Thank you.
Councilman Newton?
Chad, I spoke to Brian about this. This is your responsibility, but you may not know about it. We have a clock on Sixth Street by Boot Barn that...
Oh, yes.
...only has the correct time twice a day. Do I need to say anymore?
That clock does all kinds of cool stuff. It never does.
I did not know that, but I will...
I know you didn't.
Thank you.
Bash?
Very quickly, first off, I'm wondering if you guys are okay with, if I can ask this, that the George Ingalls Veterans Committee can be the ones to submit the names to the Veterans Advisory Committee, because we need to get that out.
Is everybody agreeable to that? Councilman Hanna?
And then Karen Speke called me again today, and she would like to have a, some kind of something to put on the wall. I know Ted, at one point, talked about a Pedley Field photo. I loved that flag with the emblem on it. But does council want to agendize that and maybe come up with an idea? Or is there something that you guys like off the cuff?
I'm going to throw the Norconian, you know, the big wool blanket? That's kind of cool.
That can be done, too.
That's pretty cool. But that's just my opinion.
I prefer the flag, that is so cool, and it's so eye-catching, but the blanket is, the new one or the old one? It's two.
Send her all three.
Yeah.
Yeah, but she's getting stuff on our wall already, so we need to...
Dominate.
Or maybe we send her two things. What do you guys want to do? Do you care?
Preference on the council. Do we have, what's the, like what we gave Calvert, was that the city seal, or was that the Horstown USA?
Horstown USA logo.
In the framed thing, too.
Did you see the flag with the logo on the court side?
Yes, it's beautiful. But I think when somebody walks into her office, are they going to go, oh, that's Norco? That would be my only discussion.
If you don't do that emblem while you're talking, do that picture like Ted was talking about.
Yeah. I just want it to be something, right when they see it, they know it's Norco, so...
I mean, there's three good ideas. So a blanket, it sounds like the flag is gone, the emblem, our Horstown USA emblem in a frame, or the thing about Pedley Field is it's gone.
Yeah, that's true.
History. Only happened once.
And by the way, my wife has recently just redone that entire photo to expand it, so it's even bigger.
It's cool.
All right, well, say it's probably narrowed down between the two. Yeah, you could do that. Show her both. That's a good idea.
Show what?
Show Karen both, the city seal and that pedley picture, and let her pick. And then we just finalize and frame it and make it beautiful.
Okay, all right.
Does that work?
So I'll send, you have the seal you can send, and I'll send the new picture that Brigitte did. It's got all the size on it now, and I'll send that to you.
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Nothing.
Nope.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to adjourn this meeting at 9:57. Right? Where is it? Yeah.